That's about it. So are we ready? You're ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
Like to call me in order? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight our invocation will be given again by Pastor Doug Parland from the Southwest Wake Baptist Church. Merry Christmas and welcome back.
Let me just read a little bit of passage of our Christmas story that gives the reason for this season. In Luke 1:26, now in the sixth month, the angel Gabriel was sent by God to a city of Galilee named Nazareth to a virgin engaged to a man whose name was Joseph of the house of David. The virgin's name was Mary. And having come in, the angel said to her, rejoice, highly favored one, the Lord is with you, blessed are you among women. But when she saw him, she was troubled at his saying and considered what manner of greeting this was. Then the angel said to her, do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God. And behold, you will conceive in your womb and bring forth a son, and shall call his name Jesus. He will be great, will be called the Son of the highest, and the Lord God will give him the throne of his father David. And he'll reign over the house of Jacob forever, and of his kingdom there'll be no end. Then Mary said to the angel, how can this be, since I do not know a man? And the angel answered and said to her, the Holy Spirit will come upon you, and the power of the highest will overshadow you; therefore also that holy one who is to be born will be called the Son of God. Now indeed, Elizabeth, your relative, has conceived a son in her old age, and this is now the sixth month to her who is called barren. For with God nothing shall be impossible. Then Mary said, behold, the maid servant of the Lord, let it be to me according to your word. And the angel departed from her. In chapter two, it came to pass in those days that a decree went out from Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed. This census took place when Quirinius was governing Syria. So all went to be registered, everyone to his own city. Joseph also went up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth into Judea to the city of David, which is called Bethlehem because he was of the house and lineage of David, to be registered with Mary's betrothed wife who was with child. So while they were there, the days were completed for her to be delivered. She brought forth her firstborn son and wrapped him in swaddling clothes and laid him in a manger, because there was no room in the inn. Now they were in the same country, shepherds living out in the fields, keeping watch over their flock by night. And behold, an angel of the Lord stood before them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were greatly afraid. Then the angel said to them, do not be afraid, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For there is born to you this day in the city of David, a Savior which is Christ the Lord. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward men. Father, we want to thank you for the fine attendance for this meeting tonight. We thank you for all of our council. We thank you for the planning board and other guests that will be speaking. We thank you for the young people and those that will be recognized and for the fine job they've done in their sports endeavor. We thank you for all that's been accomplished for Holly Springs with our fine leadership of the councilmen. Lord, we just ask thy blessing on this meeting tonight. And Lord, may all that's done be done decently and order. Lord, we pray for our world that we might realize that through Jesus Christ, the Prince of Peace, there can be peace, but it must begin in the heart. We pray that we might be good neighbors, we might be good citizens. And Lord, in this special Christmas season, that you might bless all the families of our community, be it our law enforcement, and protect them. And Lord, we live in very dangerous days in so many areas. And God, we ask for thy blessing and thy peace. And so we commit this meeting to thee. We thank you for each one that's here. And may all that's done please and honor you and give us that love for each other. And we'll thank you for we ask thy blessing, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Merry Christmas. We're going to make a slight change because the number's here. We're going to go right to our first special presentation, Kristen.
We should adopt the agenda first.
Oh, yeah, we should adopt the agenda first. Okay. Do we have to do that? Yeah. Adjustment approval, December 16th, 2014, meeting agenda. Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second. Motion being made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to go.
Hi, um, just so you know, my control is not working over here.
Neither is mine.
Well, we'll just try to work through it, Johnny.
Yeah, it's going to have to go from the podium as well.
Yeah, okay. Let's do this. Agenda 6A, special recognition, recognition of the 2014 Soccer All-Stars, 10 U Boys and Girls Teams. Kristen Denton's going to do that along with Adam Hoffman, and I'm going to come down and shake hands. That's going to be a tough job for me.
Tonight, we're here to recognize two of our Soccer All-Star teams that competed in the SWAC State Soccer Tournament in November. SWAC stands for Statewide Athletic Committee. It's made up of parks and rec professionals from agencies across the state that partner to provide opportunities for recreation teams to compete at a tournament level. This year, our department hosted the SWAC State Tournament for all divisions statewide at ages nine to sixteen. Holly Springs was represented by All-Star teams in the 10-U Boys, 10-U Girls, 12-U Boys, and 12-U Girls divisions. The 10-U Girls team coached by John Lara competed against teams from Wilson, Bladen County, and Person County. With a record of 2-2 and scoring eight goals, the 10-U Girls finished as a SWAC State runner-up team, coming up short to Wilson in the championship. So now we'd like to present certificates to the players to recognize them. So please come forward when we call your name. And stay.
If you all will come up and get your certificates, then stand right over there. What we will do at the end is give everybody a chance if they want to take pictures, or a few people here probably do, right? Yeah, okay. And we'll do the picture-taking after that, okay? So, got it?
Okay. Angelina Galetti. Lilly Kern. Not here. Okay, I'll do my best. Michelle Nyakaru. Was I close? Claire Owens. Lindsay Peach. Anna Rangel. Yospet Sima. Gracie Walters. And Brooke Whitaker.
You get the jellyfish.
Stick right here for a minute, okay?
You want to have them swing around so they can get the camera?
You want to do the pictures from here to first? Okay, let's do that. So why don't you girls come back there?
Face the TV camera.
If anybody wants to take pictures, the girls can, the sisters can.
I don't want to be in this picture.
Just walk forward, wherever you want to be.
I don't think they can see us.
Yes.
I know that won't work.
The 10-U Boys team coached by Wayne Bell competed against teams from Johnston County, Rocky Mount, Nash County, and Burlington. With a record of 5-0 and scoring 43 goals overall, the 10-U Boys went undefeated to beat Johnston County in the championship, making them the SWAC State Champions. So now we'd like to honor them. Gavin Draper.
That's good, you're good.
Nicholas Elliott. Benjamin Gruden. Ezekiel Lewis. Dante Martini. Brace Osoi. Cole Thorpe. And Shri Kent Basu Devon.
You know what you have to do. Jellyfish. Great coach.
Come on up and take the pictures. You can get closer.
State champs, that's what.
And I would just like to say a thank you to the coaches for volunteering their time with the players. Our department really appreciates what they've done, so thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Every bedroom had a Christmas tree.
Yeah, she's pretty. Yeah, I am. I'm not a...
Yeah, somewhere there is. No, that's great.
Go shopping, get the house decorated.
All right.
You having everybody over at your house?
Johnny. Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you, Adam.
I took care of a bunch of them.
Shorty. That's an inside joke, right?
The fire chief's a little nervous back there. The fire chief's a little nervous back there.
Yes, we're ready to go.
Jeez.
We are ready.
It's not a good situation.
Give them a chance to get the thing fixed.
It's like an auditor today.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm all in, y'all.
It was true that he was in the grave, as you said.
Come on.
I'll scoot up some, some Jeff can get through.
Scott.
Do you think it worked?
Oh, it does.
Yeah, we didn't save much room with that.
I still wanted to do the kids first.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I know they're outside.
Because we usually have them here, even when it's like...
Yeah.
I don't think so.
I'm going to adjust my...
I'm in business.
Just remember, we have to leave that exit doors, those two doors open. Fire chief? Now we're going to come back to public comment. We're open to public comment, period, and call Scott Ferguson? Scott, I saw you. There you are. Please come forward, state your name, address, telephone. No, forget that. Address is fine.
I'm Scott Ferguson. I live at 233 Point Park Circle. I live in Holly Point subdivision, and I just kind of wanted to meet tonight just to kind of get it on the record that I'm concerned about the infrastructure of the town, keeping up with the growth of the development of the town. And I'm here to kind of, you know, I don't know the whole process. My impression is that as far as neighborhoods being approved and things like that, that as long as the developers meet certain requirements, that there's no choice on approving them. And I don't know if that's right or not, or if close, but if it is, I'm here to ask that, you know, for the sake of this town, I've lived here for 16 years. My family's been involved with the town since the 80s, and I've seen the growth, and I'm not anti-growth. I mean, I'm, you know, okay with change. And we have a great town, but I am concerned that we're at a tipping point, and that if that is the case, as I was saying earlier, that the hands are tied upon approval, that we somehow figure out a way to meet and to change the process so that you can say no and can slow this down. The traffic is crazy, you know. You know, on my end of town trying to get down Avant Ferry Road, you know, and I see, I know road improvements are coming, and that's great. They've been explained to me, and I'm for that, but I still, if we keep putting neighborhoods in and just stamping them through because we can't stop them, I don't know if the road improvements that we have can meet with the developers that are going to come with the land that's available. And so I'm worried about schools. I know we have another school going in on New Hill Road in that area near the 12 Oaks neighborhood, but at the same time, you know, we're going to run out of space for schools. And when, you know, we're all going to be stuck when we, you know, if we decide to move, and quality of life, and people can't sell their houses because families want to move in and they can't go to schools in town. And among other things, they're driving through town without, you know, 50 stoplights on Avant Ferry Road. And, you know, even through town, I'm not just talking about one side of town, I'm talking about the whole town, you know, driving through between 4:45 and 6:30 is dangerous. And so I'm just asking for you guys to do what you can. I'm not sure what you can do, but I just kind of wanted on the record that my request was there, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Okay, at this point in time, we're going to close public hearing, or public comment, and go to agenda 7A, request communication, financial audit report, and Phyllis Pearson. Hi, Phyllis. How are you tonight? So Mary left us, right?
Okay, we conducted the audit from roughly June through October, and in doing that, we have issued audit opinions, okay, on the financial statements as presented to us. We issued unmodified opinions for the financial piece of the audit. We issued an unmodified opinion for the compliance under the yellow book, as well as an unmodified opinion on your compliance with the Powell Bill contractual requirements. So in that sense, we've issued an audit opinion without findings, without significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, so it's a good, clean audit opinion. Your responsibilities, of course, is the preparation of the financial statements and the maintenance of internal control that's sufficient to generate accurate financial statements that are free from error or fraud. And our responsibilities is to come in and examine the underlying documentation, the accounting records, the general ledger, and verify that those documents support the financial statements. And that's the basis we use for rendering an opinion that says the financial statements are in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, and that they fairly state the financial position of the town. The total government-wide statements, which are the full accrual statements, the total assets was $124 million. Total liabilities for the governmental funds was $124 million. Total equity, 86 million. Total revenues, 30 million. Total expenditures, 25 million. And the change in net position for the governmental funds was $5 million. The enterprise funds, the total assets were 125 million. Total liabilities, 52 million. The total equity, 72 million. Total operating revenues were 9.8 million, and total operating expenses, 10.3 million. So the change in net position was 3.3 million dollars. The governmental funds, on the fund basis of reporting, which is the modified accrual basis, the total assets without regard to long-term liabilities and fixed assets were $21 million. Total liabilities, $2.7 million. Total fund balances, 19 million. Total revenues, 32 million. Total expenditures, 36 million. The general fund balances in net assets, the general fund held $52,000 in non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance of $2.5 million. The unassigned fund balance was $7.3 million, and that meets the LGC recommendation that the unassigned fund balances be greater than 8% of expenditures. Okay, so that's a goal that you try to achieve every year. Roughly 2 million of the unassigned amounts subsequent to the preparation of the financial statements has been committed to capital projects, including recreation projects. The unrestricted net assets in the enterprise fund were $20 million, and that's the amount that's available for the council's use in capital projects, operation costs, and things of that nature in the enterprise funds. The legal debt margin was $218 million. The debt coverage ratio for the revenue bonds was 386 million, I'm sorry, 386%. And of course, the town met the covenants of the bond agreements by meeting that number. In similar towns, that number ranges from 100% to 260%. And there were other conditions on the bond covenants as well, and you meet those. The debt-to-asset ratio was .34. And you should be aware that in your debt, $1.1 million is attributable to the employee benefit plans, and that you have commitments for post-employment benefits that you will pay once your employees retire. And the bond rating at the end of the year was AA, which is the same it's been for a number of years with standard impours, and that indicates very strong credit worthiness. And it denotes a very low default rate, if you will. Overall tax collection rate, you, like most towns, are experiencing an increase over the prior years, because when the state took over the DMV taxes, the collection rates have been around 98%, and your overall percent's 99%. And that's the audit, and I'm available for questions.
Questions or comments?
Jimmy's read the whole thing.
Is there a CPA among us?
Oh, gracious. Welcome back, Phyllis.
Thank you.
I'm probably the only one who's read this report, most of it, and makes sense of it. Explain one more time what an unmodified opinion is for the layman, if you will.
Okay. Unmodified opinion. What that means is that the opinion does not include paragraphs or emphasis of matters or items like going-concern comments. It is the cleanest opinion an auditor gives. It's a very good opinion, and it basically says, as we looked at the financial statements, we did not encounter any internal control problems, and we did not encounter any problems with the underlying documentation. Things are very well supported at the town.
So to cut to the chase like we did last year, the town is in excellent financial health, if what I'm reading and hearing from you is correct.
That is correct.
That was my question.
To hear.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I think it's great. I like that debt ratio.
Oh, good. That's your hard work.
That's right.
Sounds good. At this point in time, is there any further discussion? All good?
We just have to credit the town manager and the employees in the finance department with keeping us straight, and the job well done by everybody.
A lot of hard effort went into it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, sir. And I'll pass that along to our staff. We do have some members of our finance department here, as well as Daniel Weeks, and it's been a very busy year with obviously a lot going on.
Absolutely.
And the fact that there have been some changes, and the finance department's been in transition, but the fact that they were able to have such a good financial report, I think, speaks to the hard work and dedication of our employees. Thank you.
Anything else? We're good? Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
And now, a motion? Maybe? Nope.
If you will, accept the report and management letter.
Just to make a motion to accept the report, odd accept report and management letter following the audit of the town's financial statements.
Second.
Motion being made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Phyllis, again, thank you so very much.
Seeing you had one of the biggest audiences we've had here in the last...
And you done good.
She done real good.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearings. Again, we have eight, so I'll make a couple comments upfront. Number one, if someone who has signed up for public hearing says exactly the same thing you want to say, please pass. Or please pass. If you're expecting the board to comment on anything you say tonight on public hearings, that is not the case. Particularly in the first one, we have a joint public hearing with the planning board, and the purpose of that would be that they hear the comments of the people who are here tonight who want to make comments about that. And then they will take that back, and then on, I think it was 8A in particular, we will come back probably in February with the board, okay? And counselor, you have a couple things you'd like to say as far as tactics, et cetera. Please.
Well, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there are different types of decisions that this board makes. There are legislative decisions and ministerial decisions. Ministerial decisions where you have absolutely no discretion, and you go forward. Legislative decisions are where you make the laws. And in 8A, the PUD amendment is really amending a zoning ordinance. It's a, a PUD is a planned unit development that sets zoning criteria specific to a piece of land, in this case, Ram Cat Village. And that's a legislative decision. So you do have sort of a wide breadth of issues that you can consider in making these decisions. And based on the planning board recommendation that will occur later on next month, it'll come back to you, and it'll be at that time that you make those decisions. The thing that you're tasked with, and the planning board is tasked with, is to consider every permissible use that, you know, not specific to any particular developer or person or anything, but any permissible use could be made according to how that zoning criteria is established at the change. Now, this is an existing use, and... Now, this is an existing use, and Ms. Holloman will discuss the differences between the existing use or the existing permitted use and what changes are proposed. So your sort of decision criteria, basically, it sets forth in those parameters, what, you know, what you've got now and what is being proposed are those two types of things. But you have a very wide breadth of things that you can consider. What you cannot consider is anything that would be specific to any one applicant. You must consider the, every use that can be made of that parcel according to the criteria that's set forth in the PUD document, if that makes any sense whatsoever. If it doesn't, I'm sorry. Best I can do.
You done good, John. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so the item in front of us is 8A, joint public hearing, 00 PUD, 05 A05, Ram Cat Village PUD, major amendment. That's Laura Holloman and Elizabeth Slater, or Sean, maybe?
We'll hear from Kendra later as well.
So Laura, you're on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. And thank you, John, for that introduction that lays out exactly what our objective is here tonight, certainly to execute a joint public hearing between town council and planning board. And planning board, if you'll raise your hands. Planning board's here tonight as well to hear input from both applicant staff, as well as the public. You've heard amendment because the, as it stands, the Ram Cat Planning Unit Development, or PUD, is a living, breathing thing and is currently valid today. Whether or not the amendment is ultimately approved or not, the developer can submit a detailed subdivision plan once that decision is made. It'll just be based on the current PUD or the proposed amendment, if that is approved. So in terms of the project history, the Ram Cat PUD was first approved in March of 2001. In 2006, it was granted two extensions concurrent with ordinance regulations. In May 2014, it was reinstated by the planning board to be active as it stands currently today. This is some adjacent property information regarding when these phases of Sunset Ridge and Cobble, Cobble Ridge was approved. Phase seven, the original approval was June 2004. Phase five, you had that original approval of July 2003. And phase four was the original approval in April 2000. Cobble Ridge was originally approved in December 2003. So there's your timeline there and kind of surrounding it. However, I will tell you that, as evidenced by the plans that were submitted and that we are required to keep forever, all these phases were planned with this in mind. So they showed connections that Kendra will discuss later. So just wanted to establish the timeline as we go through the comparisons. Terms of the current land uses, we'll start with this first. The current PUD, as it shows here, I apologize for it being grainy, but I will describe and point out to things so you can clearly understand. The current PUD shows a small variety of land uses and are divided into two categories, residential and mixed use. Residential one here and residential two. And then you've got the mixed use sections here. Now, this is Holly Springs Road. This is Bass Lake Road. You can see existing, we've got Holly Springs Crossing, which is the Lowe's Food Shopping Center, as well as on the other side of Bass Lake, this is Yakken Bank, as it's called currently. And as, of course, those are existing and were originally approved as part of the overall Ram Cat PUD. In terms of the kind of categories and subcategories, they allow for varying densities, which I'll go over in detail later. We'll go over the density comparison between the current and proposed. But you can see that they're divided into four developable areas with really no differentiation between them. In terms of the permitted, excuse me, the permitted use table, this is really what it outlines. What it allows for, as John was saying, that you would consider when a subsequent subdivision plan came into play. In terms of the current PUD, this is, this is your, as it exists today. This is the proposal. So what they've done is they have merged the residential one and two into one residential area, so they simplified it. And they have enlarged the residential area by 10.53 acres. So the residential area got larger, so subsequently the commercial area shrank. And that's why, I'll go over this later, but there's additional units allowed, additional 93 units that expand, of course, a larger amount of residential area. In terms of the commercial district, of course, you remember that that used to be called a mixed-use district. Now they're simplifying it into a commercial district. So what does this all mean? This sets up the table of permitted uses. So you can, let's start with residential. So you can see the current and proposed, both allows for single-family residential or duplexes. Both allow for townhomes, so currently and proposed. The current PUD allowed for apartments along the entire residential category. So this whole area could be apartments as it stands today. The proposed PUD eliminates apartments in the residential section, so they've taken that out. And the current PUD also allows for condominiums. Proposed PUD makes no mention of that. So we would consider that not allowed. Terms of manufactured homes, neither one would allow for. Schools or daycares aren't mentioned. Parks, of course, are allowed. Public buildings, doesn't make any mention of that. Churches, so we consider those not permissible. Temporary uses, which is really any kind of special event that you would see through a commercial, like if they wanted to put up a, you know, Christmas tree farm or a temporary tent to promote a business on a Saturday, those are concurrent through the appropriate approval processes. In terms of, so this is really what the residential allows for. In terms, so you've basically got single-family allowed in both concurrent and proposed. Duplexes, townhomes are allowed in both. And apartments are allowed currently, but not in the proposed amendment. In terms of the mixed use, so mixed use slash commercial areas, single-family, of course, is not allowed. That's not intended to be a commercial use. Duplexes are allowed currently, but not in proposed. I want to explain special use permits. When this was originally approved back in 2001, it was concurrent with our old zoning ordinance, which specified special use permits. So one of the things that the proposed PUD has done is also updated the uses with our current criteria. So they've updated special use permits with special exception uses, which is the term that we now use, special exception use permits. So they've done that. So they're calling out, in the current PUD, townhome is a special, special use, apartments is a special use. And the proposed PUD, in the commercial area, they have called out apartments in a vertical mixed-use building only. So you could have retail office below, apartments above, if that was ultimately approved apartment, or excuse me, condominium special use. And that is also allowed in the proposed PUD. That needs to state that that is allowed. You could have a condo above or an apartment. Schools are allowed in both. Parks, public buildings, churches, again, you have the distinction with the temporary uses. Retail uses would be allowed. Office professional uses are allowed in both. Restaurants are allowed in both. However, I want to point out that the current PUD makes no distinction between a sit-down restaurant, like Olive Garden, and a Wendy's drive-thru restaurant. So you could have both as a permitted use, could be approved with no public hearing, no chance for any public hearing or neighbors to voice their concerns on that under the current PUD. However, today, they have, under the proposed PUD, they have separated out those uses. So they've said that a sit-down restaurant is a permitted use. However, there are stipulating that a drive-thru restaurant has to go through a special exception use with a public hearing, with adjacent property owner notifications, that sort of thing. In terms of shopping centers, those are both allowed. Banks are both allowed. Convenience store, gas station, that is a permitted use currently. The proposed PUD kind of strengthens that up and makes it more strict and makes that a special exception use. So again, you'd have public hearing. Libraries, museums, that's a conditional use, what we today would call a special exception use permit. So they have updated that standard. Assembly halls, again, special exception use. And hotel and conference center, currently, that is a proposed use that could happen. Could have, you know, three, four-story hotel built there. Proposed PUD has removed that from the list. So a hotel and a conference center would no longer be allowed in the commercial district areas. Any questions with the permitted uses?
Questions so far?
Okay.
Keep going. Thank you.
This is the density comparison. Now, side-by-side comparison of the allowed units for the PUD is challenging because, again, the current PUD is divided into residential one and residential two. And the proposed PUD has simplified that into just a residential area. So again, under the proposed PUD, as a whole, the residential land area got big by 10.53 acres. However, the proposed PUD, of course, by those standards, you can see the proposed PUD, overall residential acres is 64.36. This is what the current PUD is, 53.83. So the current PUD will allow for 293 units, but the proposed PUD allows for a maximum of 386. It's important to point out that the overall density did not change. It still is showing a maximum of six units per acre. You just have a bigger number allowed because of the land area increase. But it has not become more dense. This is the current PUD, again, illustrating residential one, residential two. You can see how residential one, in these areas, the maximum density is 3.6 dwelling units an acre. So you have your most dense allowable areas adjacent to Sunset Ridge North. And the current lesser dense is actually surrounding the commercial and the open space here in the front. This is the proposed PUD, which just shows an overall density of three to six units per acre, maximum density of six. But again, they've simplified that to the whole entire residential area. Any questions on density?
Questions so far? Keep going.
This table shows the residential lot styles that would be allowed in the current versus proposed PUD. The current PUD basically shows, you've got two townhomes, lot sizes of a maximum of 2,000 square feet and 1,000 square feet. Then you've got what they call village type A and B lots, which show a maximum of 4,000 and 6,000. You've got a neighborhood lot of 7,000 square feet and a homestead lot of 12,000 square feet. In terms of the proposed, what they've done is they have gone ahead and classified and added more information to these lot types by calling them out as alley-loaded or front-loaded. Doesn't mean that under the current standard, you couldn't still get an alley, it's just not called out. They've gone the extra step and added additional information to show alley-loaded versus front-loaded. You can see in terms of the townhomes, there's no square footage differential, both allowing 1,600. But you can see the townhome A lot decreased from 2,000 to 1,600. But you've got an increase from 1,000 to 1,600 in the townhome B lot from the current to proposed. The village A, which is alley-loaded, features minimum lot size of 4,200. That actually increased from the allowable village A lot of 4,000. Village B lot allowed for 6,000. The village B, traditional, front-loaded, allows for 4,025 square feet. The neighborhood lot of 7,000, the proposed residential lot type has eliminated that lot size as a possibility. And they have clarified the homestead lot to be front-loaded. So that is still in play. Any questions about the lot standards?
Explain that neighborhood, the difference between those, they've eliminated. What does that mean?
It means that they, that would not be a possibility to have a 7,000 square foot lot. You know, you could have, you know, village A or village B lot that certainly could be more than 4,000 and maybe closer to 7,000, but it's not specifically called out as a neighborhood lot of 7,000. These are the overall setbacks which speak to perimeters along Holly Springs Road, both the north side, which is undeveloped, is 30%. The south side, which is developed of the bank and Holly Springs Crossing, is 20%. No change there. Bass Lake Road, along Bass Lake Road is 20, is 20 feet, no change there. Adjacent to residential Sunset Ridge, original PUD calls out that to be 20 feet. The proposed PUD is no change. So no change in the overall setbacks. I'll go over the specific planting requirements, which there is changes, and I'll discuss that in detail later. So any questions about the overall PUD building setbacks?
Questions?
So no structures, no parking can occur within this setback.
Okay.
This is the proposed lot layout. Now, I want to state again, the purpose of a PUD is to create, of course, a unique zoning that can't be achieved through conventional zoning. But however, typically, the applicant is required to provide proposed, you know, access points, roadway design, proposed landscape buffers, and so forth. But lot layouts are not shown. This is why there is no lot layout in the current PUD. They're not required to show it. The proposed PUD, however, does show a proposed lot layout. And they've primarily done that to illustrate their proposed road network, as well as to illustrate adjacent lot sizes adjacent to existing residential lots. So they've done this voluntarily. Want to call out existing residential lot layout sizes adjacent to existing subdivisions. You've got, adjacent to Chris Mill, they're proposing alley-loaded, single-family lots with an average lot size of 57, or excuse me, 5,793 square feet, as well as 5,786 square feet. Again, remember that a village lot allows for 4,000. So they certainly, it coincides with their proposed lot layout there. In terms of adjacent to Midden Way, which is here, they're showing alley-loaded, single-family lots with an average lot size of 6,700. lots with an average lot size of 6,753 square feet. And adjacent to Flint Point Lane, which is here, you've got both alley-loaded, single-family with an average lot size of 6,555 square feet, as well as townhome lots, which is in this area, which would be, which would have front parking. So you'd have front parking spaces in front of those townhomes. Any questions about the proposed?
Sorry? No, ma'am, we're not ready for that yet, please.
In terms of adjacent to Cobble Point, which Cobble Ridge, and the lots adjacent to Cobble Point, just want to point out that, as you can see, there will be a protected environmental feature, 50-foot stream buffer that they will have to provide there. But adjacent to that, on the other side, there is townhome lots with front parking proposed. The townhome lots will be required, remember, to meet the minimum lot size of 1,600 square feet, and that would be verified at the time of subdivision plan submitted and reviewed. Just make sure this doesn't come up again. So those are, those are the lot layouts. This is, you can see, I'll have the applicant go over this. Is this a, is this a stormwater? This is a stormwater device here. This is sky mount, how it comes in, and I'll have the applicant will go over what that stormwater feature will, how it will be designed. I'll let him go over that, the engineer is present. Any questions about the proposed lot layouts?
Can I make the assumption that the ones in dark are larger than average? Is that correct or incorrect?
It's, it's larger than the minimum lot size of 4,000, yes. This is the proposed landscaping. That, want to point out that the current, adjacent to residential, again, shows 20-foot buffer. However, it does not state that it will remain undisturbed, so they can grade and disturb within that 20 feet. However, they do have to, it does show a basic three-to-one berm with one large canopy tree and a medium-sized evergreen shrub, and that's it, under the current PUD as it's approved. The proposed PUD shows a...
Can you just, have we lost transmission? So we can get it all recorded on?
Okay. So landscaping, again, under current standards, still have a 20-foot, you'll have a 20-foot distance within that landscape buffer, but it shows a basic three-to-one berm with one large canopy tree and a medium-sized evergreen shrub, and that's it, under current PUD standards. The proposed PUD adjacent to residential shows a 20-foot undisturbed buffer. Remember, the current one does not specify undisturbed. Proposed does, and in addition, will be supplemented as necessary to achieve a semi-opague buffer that achieves what's called a B-75 value. B-75 includes a mix of four large evergreen trees that have to have a minimum planting of 12 feet, two tall shrubs that are planted at 36 inches, 20, small 24-inch shrubs, as well as three small deciduous trees, meaning inch-and-a-half caliper at planting, and two large deciduous trees, meaning planted at two-and-a-half-inch caliper. Now, that is supplementing the existing plant material within that buffer to ensure that a semi-opague buffer is achieved. So that is that planting detail, adjacent to residential. We'll also point out that the existing, both, as it, as the, excuse me, as the proposed PUD landscape buffer, it is not shown as platted within the residential lots adjacent to existing residential lots. So for example, all of Sunset Ridge North and all of Cobble Ridge, their landscape buffer is a part of their lot. So Sunset Ridge, they have 25 feet, that is a part of, of their lots. Under the proposed PUD, it will not be platted as part of lots and will be separate. So just want to make sure that that's understood. Any questions about landscaping residential-wise?
Would you show with the arrow where the buffers are, please?
Sure. This, of course, is Jones Park, so, but it's zoned residential, so we treat it the same. So you'll have the 20-foot undisturbed buffer along this area. Here.
And how wide is that again, Laura, please?
20 feet.
20 feet. I think, just to reiterate, the buffer that is in the Sunset Ridge North properties is not platted. It's whatever they, they have a buffer of 20 feet?
25 feet.
25 feet, but it's, it's on their property and it's whatever's there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So nothing will be added to it?
No, that's...
On their property?
Not on their side, no.
If they want to. Okay.
In terms of along Holly Springs Road, under existing PUD standards, a streetscape buffer of shade trees and a row of hollies with the stone columns that you see, of course, nicely, that is along the edge of Holly Springs Crossing and Yakon Bank, that is the current PUD standard, and that is also the proposed PUD standard. So that has not proposed to change. So you'll have, either way, a nice uniform look along Holly Springs Road, as you will on the north side, as you will on the south side. Any questions with the landscaping?
No? All good?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Talk about architectural requirements. This is the proposed. I have no existing architectural perspectives to show you for residential because there are none. The only thing that the existing PUD says is that all townhomes and single families must have a front porch occupying at least 50 percent of the facade and must be elevated in at least six feet deep, and that's it. That's all that it talks about in terms of residential architecture. So building materials and other design, design elements are not mentioned or provided. In terms of proposed, this is a wide perspective of single-family that is shown for conceptual. At this point, of course, we would see it at the building permit stage, but it is provided now for conceptual information. You can see that, that all single-family do show a covered front porch or covered front entry, and they also have rear, rear garage options, which I don't have examples of those, but they would have rear alley garages if those were, in fact, alley lots, is how those would be accessed. So the driveways would be in the rear off of an alley. In terms of townhomes, this is a proposed townhome architecture, showing garage options as well as, you know, just traditional, front-loaded also. So you can see that, I won't touch on too much of this because I know that the applicant has, is going over this in their presentation, but I want to show you exactly what is in the PUD proposal, and these elevations are in the proposed PUD document. In terms of the non-residential, currently, the elevations feature a mixture of brick, stucco, archways, and hipped roofs, which is Holly Springs Crossing. So just think that in your mind. They didn't, long ago, there wasn't a elevation requirement to be submitted, so I've got a pencil sketch of what that is. But the, given the fact that the proposed commercial districts have to take under consideration that there's already a number of existing commercial located within Ramcat PUD, they will be given the task of making sure that that is complementary to the existing commercial, as well as meeting our gateway architectural standards that our UDO allows for. So they'll be subject to, to strict standards as what's currently stipulated by our, by our UDO. Any questions for the current versus proposed comparison?
Seeing none.
Planning board? Okay. Now, Kendra, I'd like to call up, and she's going to talk about some transportation.
Thank you, Laura.
What I wanted to talk about tonight is there's been quite a few inquiries about the transportation, and as with any last standing infill project, your typical items for engineering are not of topic. The water and sewer is there, and so that leaves transportation to be discussed. And so what I wanted to do is just sort of step through our typical process for evaluating transportation. When a project of this size comes in, the town does require that a transportation impact analysis, which we call a TIA acronym, is required. And our engineering department staff sits down with the engineer that the owner or developer has hired, and we scope out, the town says what intersections we want to be looked at, and different things with the project that we perceive as, you know, may could be an issue. These roads, most of these roads are DOT-maintained. Holly Springs Road is DOT-maintained, Bass Lake Road's DOT, and Main Street. And DOT also has a say in scoping that transportation study and the intersections that are looked at. So we have three parties come to an agreement of the scope. Their engineer, being paid by the developer, goes and pays, does their transportation study. That transportation study then comes in to the town to be reviewed. The town hires an independent, third-party professional engineer that then reviews this document on behalf of the town. There are some items that are judgment calls of professional engineers, and we always like to, especially something of this magnitude, we like to have a third party that has the interest of the town at heart. In this case, we have done that, as well as DOT has a special branch within congestion management, and they also have a professional engineer review it as well. We combine the comments, we go back and forth with the developer and developer's engineer on the comments until the comments are addressed. Currently, we are in that review process, so we do not have a final TIA today. We have, we're pretty far along and we have a good idea. So just wanted to share with you that process that we have there. When we saw this come in, I was actually quite pleased that this area of commercial actually got smaller, and when you start talking about transportation, you, you know, whenever there's houses, those are going to be less trips than your commercial. So when we saw this pot of development get smaller, I was actually quite pleased. What we're looking at with the TIA right now is called Phase One, and that's the residential component. And we're looking at requirements that will be placed on this plan just for Phase One. We are, at this time, we are not going to go ahead and spell out what's needed with the commercial. That is just speculative at this time of when that would come online. And so what we have talked with them about doing is, at which time these two pieces up front come in for approval, they will then update the transportation study, which will have updated traffic numbers whenever it comes in. If it's next year or if it's three years, we don't really want to commit that right now. We would like for them to do what they need to do at that time. So I feel like that's something, good for our residents, good for our travel and public. We're leaving that for them to do when this development comes in. For example, right now, we could say, oh, there's going to be two turn lanes needed with this commercial. They don't develop for three or four years. Things change. They actually need to do more than that. You know, that's what, we're kind of leaving that open. So going kind of through there, the other thing is Laura touched on, is, you know, in 2001, these stubs were planned for the Ramcat PUD. When these sections of Sunset Ridge North and Windcrest over here came in, they had to stub to this land as planned. And whenever, you know, the town and municipalities all over require the interconnections, and while if I lived right here for a while and I stubbed up to Forest, you know, I might, I can sympathize with that. But the reason for the interconnection, and the reason this is not a cul-de-sac, is because we do want to foster interconnectivity. Interconnectivity, you know, it's like a downtown grid. The more connections you can have, the better flow of traffic you're going to have. If this was a wall built at the back of this subdivision and everyone had to come out this point, that puts a lot of stress on Holly Springs Road. If you live in the back of this neighborhood, these interconnections are designed so that you can get over to Main without traveling on congested roadways. And likewise, interconnections for emergency services. We have a fire station and our new police stations coming over here. With these interconnections, you know, the fire department, instead of coming around Lynxland and coming up Crossway to this area, or if they're over here going Main Street and coming down, we now have increased some response time there for safety, as with police and EMS. All of our town-provided services, trash and whatnot, everything just works a little bit better when you don't have walls between subdivisions. The other, you know, I think beneficial point is, anyone who lives up in this area that drops their children off at Holly Springs Elementary or Holly Ridge Elementary or Middle, you know, no longer are we coming down and coming through the Lynxland signal or Main Street. You too can now use these interconnections to cut your commute to drop your child off. What we've tried to, to do, and talking to the designer, is to make it so that it's just, it's not just a very straight shot through the neighborhood. There are some circuitous movements through here, but we do want to foster the interconnect, the interconnectivity, and those are the benefits. Currently, what we're looking at with the residential piece is about 3,000 trips a day would be contributed from these folks. Now, just quick math, that's about eight trips a day per house. I don't know, at my house, we're, we're at about four trips a day, but I only have two drivers. So the TIA is worst-case scenario, it's for multiple drivers in and out, constant, you know, back and forth. So that is something that we do look at. So when I say 3,000 trips a day, that's where that number's coming from. With that being said, I just, that's all I have for right now. Obviously, if there's any questions, we'll speak to those, but I just wanted to go over those items with you since we had had a lot of the questions about it.
Any further questions, Kendra?
Kendra, that the intersection in there, Bass Lake Road, will be upgraded with lights, so that'll be a four-way light into and out of the subdivision and the commercial area.
Absolutely. With the addition of this, that adds the fourth leg of the intersection of the Bass Lake, and of course, across the frontage will be widened to half of a four-lane median divided section as well. And once we get through the TIA, there might be some off-site improvements as well.
Okay. Anything else? Good? Okay. Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, we're going to open a public hearing. And again, we have eight people. Please limit your comments to like three minutes, and again, pardon me? Applicant? You want to have the applicant come forward? Okay. Come forward applicant. I thought we were done. There's two applicants. There's three applicants.
I can't see that. I had a birthday recently, too, by the way.
Happy birthday.
Not that ma-, never mind.
And then you'll see, at the bottom you'll see.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay.
After technical difficulties moving forward.
You sure?
Not positive. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the planning board, my name's Don Mizell with Longleaf Development Services, pleased to be here before you tonight. I'm a member of the project team for the Ramcat Village PUD Amendment. Uh, joining me tonight is the applicant with Lenar Homes, Steve Leach. Also, a project engineer with Spalding and Norris, Tom Spalding. And in the back somewhere, no need to come up at this point, is Ronald Stevenson, our traffic engineer, who's responsible for our TIA submittal with Ramey Kemp and Associates. And fortunately for everyone here tonight, staff did such a good job with their report, they were so thorough, it has cut my part substantially down. So in the spirit of not repeating things twice, I will certainly try to, uh, kind of add lib a little bit and skip over some of the detail that I was planning on speaking about tonight.
Thank you.
Tom and I are very pleased to still be involved with the project. We worked with the Jones family back in 2001 to help them plan for the future of their property. At the time, uh, they were in no hurry to develop. They did end up selling off the property where Holly Springs Crossing is located, but they want to make sure they plan their property with all the growth coming around them at the time, you know, 2001. And we're proud to be a part of that project, and I look forward to moving it forward tonight. Laura's already gone over the existing master plan. I was planning on going through several of the same things she did. Um, I, I think the, the main takeaway from what we've got existing today with the existing PUD master plan is, uh, the land uses proposed aren't that dissimilar from what we're proposing with the amendment. Um, the town homes, the single-family, they're located in the residential district, are essentially the same. Um, we are going to shift around some, some boundary lines between the mixed use and the, and, and the residential portion of the project. Um, I think the key kind of takeaway, again, like Laura's covered most of this, um, the interconnectivity access, the land use, uh, or the TND components. When Tom and I worked on this plan, uh, back in 2000, 2001, uh, we were fortunate enough that, uh, the Joneses were well-versed in development styles and, uh, how to properly plan their property. And Ms. Doris Jones was actually a planning board member. I, I think she just stepped off the planning board at the time, so she had served, like many of you have in that role, and knew about traditional neighborhood design components. And we really incorporated as many of these as we could into the design of the existing master plan. And when I say TND, that's traditional neighborhood, new urbanism. It's basically street trees, sidewalks, pedestrian friendly, friendly roadways, um, character to the homes via front porches and architectural treatments. The emphasis on the garage, um, front porches, th- those types of things. And as Laura went over earlier, the different styles of lots we proposed, the 4,000 square foot, single-family, the, the five, the seven, the 12, we incorporated all those features into each one of those lot designs to try to foster that, that traditional neighborhood component. And I'm, I'm proud to say that the plan we're going to talk about tonight, the amendment, uh, mirrors those as well, so that's kind of lived on through the amendment. Real quickly, uh, one kind of neat thing about an infill project like this is I think, um, it's probably better positioned for walkability, not just walkability internally, from a pedestrian-oriented standpoint, but walkability externally. Since 2001, the town has done so much to be proactive in walkability. Um, sidewalk projects down Bass Lake Road, um, down Holly Springs Road, a network of new sidewalks downtown. And as Ramcat looms on the horizon now, as far as developing the residential portion, its residents are going to have a, uh, a real walkable, uh, experience, I believe. You, you've got a short walk, a 10-minute walk to Holly Ridge, of course, Holly Springs Elementary is right next door, so is Jones Park. All those are interconnected through the subdivision. To get to this building tonight, you're probably looking at a three-quarter of a mile, 15-minute walk, five more to get you over to the cultural center and library. And those things, uh, have just matured nicely over time, and the connections to Wumble Park and, uh, the community center as well. And by the way, Google Earth took us on a little different route. We, we wouldn't come through downtown to get to Wumble Park, we'd go down Bass Lake and over to Stent's a lot quicker, so, uh, don't those, uh, those mileages or those minutes to be misleading, but, uh, all in all, within a 30-minute walk of the entrance of Ramcat, you've got some really neat town amenities to, to take in, and I think the walkability is a plus with this, with this project. This location is. Uh, real quickly, the comp plan. The, the proposed plan I have shown on the screen here, or the existing plan, they both greatly mirror the comprehensive plan, as far as what the town has got planned for this section of town. My cursor there is at Holly Springs Road and Bass Lake Road. The darker orange here is mixed use. Both of our plans have mixed-use elements, the existing plan and the new plan in that area. The lighter colored, I guess that's yellow, uh, is residential on the comp plan. Of course, that's where our residential is located as well. So, uh, existing plan, proposed plan, they both mirror the town's comprehensive plan, and that's always a good thing. We're, we're in concert with the town's plans. Okay, why are we here? Um, I'll, I'll go through these quickly, because Laura has already covered this in great detail. Um, and there is a typo here that should be 10 acres, not 5.5. Now, how do I go back? That may be a challenge.
Right click.
Previous.
I need a teenager.
Nice.
Yeah.
Techies.
Basically, removing that mixed-use line, having less mixed-use, more residential. It, it's just, it's the opinion of the applicant Lenar Homes and the owners of Jones family that, uh, it's just a better fit, it's a higher and best use of that property to shrink down some of the mixed-use and have more residential. Uh, the property's been there for quite a while as mixed-use, and it, it's just, I think that the market demand is not there for that much mixed-use at the intersection. They're still saving some on the other side, but it's, it's both parties' opinion, it's a better use of the property. Uh, also, as Laura mentioned, consolidating the two pods, um, to a uniform density, and tweaking the single-family and townhome lot design criteria. Again, there's no significant reduction in the lot sizes we're talking about, 4,000 was the lowest square footage you could have on a single-family home under the existing PUD. That is the case now as well. It's just being tweaked to, um, mirror a very specific product that, that Lenar has in mind. But again, the reduction in the overall square footage. And also, we're tweaking the street design, alternatives to better address, traffic calming, to slow people down coming through the neighborhood while still providing for interconnected streets. And, and one byproduct to this, when you reduce that mu-, uh, mixed-use acreage down, that also reduces theoretically the overall density of the PUD. In mixed-use, you can do apartments in higher-density residential, and that's usually a 10 to 15 unit an acre, uh, range, whereas in the residential section, it's three to six units an acre. So if you're giving up 10 units an acre of mixed-use, that translates into less density project-wide. So even though our numbers have climbed in the residential section, overall, the potential is for less density over the entire PUD. But again, there we go. This just illustrates the existing line, the green is residential, the, uh, blue is mixed-use, that's how it exists today. And there's the residential one in green, residential two in orange. Fast forward, there's the relocated line, you see how the commercial or the mixed-use shrinks, and we have more residential. So those were the purposes of the amendment from Lenar's standpoint. Now, from the town's standpoint, and in working with the town through our review process, uh, several things have been additionally amended to the plan to bring it up to speed. And I won't go into the detail Laura did, I think you've got a good understanding of that, but, uh, two access points were limited, uh, were eliminated on Holly Springs Road. An increased level of detail, as you've seen already, was added to the plan, showing basically a subdivision-level plan for Ramcat Village, showing where the alleys are located, where the townhomes, where the single-family, a lot more detail than we had on the existing plan. And that certainly generated a lot of comments, both with staff and with our neighbors. The TIA, we talked about that. Stormwater ponds were not a requirement in 2001. They are today, so we had to make a provision for that and show those ponds physically on the map, so we've done that as well. Um, again, the, the rear-loaded lots, those are shown, and the last two bullets, we've gone back and tried to mirror the town's current, current commercial code as far as permitted uses and standards and those things as well. These are the connectors I was speaking of. There were several, uh, potential connectors to Holly Springs Road, but staff felt it best we eliminated, uh, those, uh, for the time being, and let each, uh, project stand on its own as it comes in, based on a new TIA. And as we showed before, uh, we're showing exactly what the applicant is proposing to a very specific level of detail. Thirdly, the third group that's had a impact on how the plan looks today, um, is, is a large part through our neighborhood meetings, through meeting with our neighbors. We've had, uh, three neighborhood meetings, uh, two of which have been voluntary, and one was the mandatory, uh, meeting which we held December 1st. You have in your packet, or should have, a detailed report of that December 1st meeting, where we tried to catalog all the information we presented, and all the discussion we heard from our neighbors, and all the concerns. Rather than going through that whole three-page, uh, report tonight, I feel pretty confident, and I'm sure I'll, I'll, I'll be corrected if I miss, misspeak here, but there's kind of three categories you can put most of the feedback we heard into. Uh, that's transition, transportation, and schools. Uh, and by transition, I mean, you know, how you go from Ramcat Village PUD to the PUD next door, which is Sunset Ridge North, the existing Sunset Ridge North. How do the buffers look? Uh, will they be natural or undisturbed, uh, or disturbed, I'm sorry? Where will the townhomes go? Where will the single-family go? Well, I see a, a rear alley from, from my lot. What is the price point, what's the price range of the homes? Those types of questions, um, we heard, and kind of can account those to the transition issue again between neighborhoods. Uh, transportation, of course, uh, anytime you connect an existing neighborhood to a new neighborhood through a interconnected street pattern, you're going to have concerns about cut-through traffic, about, uh, children, um, who have enjoyed playing in the street because they're dead-end streets, all of a sudden they're connected. Safety issues like that have come up, um, as well as the impact to surrounding road networks, Holly Springs Road in particular. So those things came up under transportation. And schools, at our last meeting, um, a lot of concern was addressed about existing capping issues, uh, I guess countywide and, and townwide, as well as, uh, capacity issues with, with area schools. So based on that neighborhood feedback, um, we have tried to do some things to our plan to, um, to be good neighbors. We heard undisturbed buffer was a priority, um, or a, a, a want. Um, we, we couldn't just say, sure, we'll give you an undisturbed buffer. We had to do a good bit of engineering work to get to that point, um, because the grading work that goes into that, you just need to make sure you, you, you can promise something that you can actually deliver. So, uh, Tom did a great deal of grading work on the property, grading, planning work on the property, and, uh, put retaining walls, uh, along our common buffer in places to ensure that undisturbed buffer could remain. Uh, so a lot of work went into that. Also, we've agreed to go with a B-75, um, buffer, which requires some supplemental plantings, where you've got a thin patch of, of undisturbed buffer. Uh, I think Laura spoke to that earlier. And, uh, staff also spoke to the, uh, putting larger lots up against our boundary with our neighbors at Sunset Ridge North. So not putting all the 4,000-foot lots there, doing some of the bigger, uh, deeper lots, uh, with square footages from 5,700 to 6,700, uh, square feet. And this plan kind of shows that. Um, you know, you've, you've got these, these black lines are retaining walls, and you can see where the wall is here along the common boundary with Sunset North, as is a section here and other places, but the intent of that is to, uh, you know, to preserve that undisturbed buffer, and again, to supplement that if we need to. Um, also, we've got some open space shown in red, I believe, scattered throughout the neighborhood, and there's some substantial pockets of open space that back up to these buffers in certain locations as well. And, um, our BMP, our stormwater ponds are also located in the low areas, which happen to abut, um, certain sections of Sunset North as well, so that's a little additional, um, green space, if you will, as well. So that's kind of where we ended up here tonight, um, again, through Lenar's, um, wishes as far as revising the PUD, staff feedback, and the feedback from our neighbors. And with that, I know I promised to be brief, I'm sorry, I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to Tom to talk about a few engineering issues, and then Steve's going to hit on a few, uh, neighborhood design issues.
Thank you.
Scroll down to move it.
Okay, so what, what we did is to try to, uh, when we talked about, uh, uh, you know, undisturbed buffers and retaining walls, and, and how would it exactly look in my black backyard, we, we actually came up with some two-scale illustrations here, uh, to try and, uh, illustrate what it's really going to be like. What we tried to do is take a slice through, uh, down a lot line of our proposed side lot line, and through an adjoining lot line to kind of give you a feeling of what it would look like. And just to, just to kind of go through one of these, um, you know, you would have your typical building, rear building setback here, you would have a 20-foot shared driveway access here, uh, you would have some open space, and then our committed 20-foot undisturbed buffer, and then the adjoining lots, 25-foot, um, undisturbed buffer. And so if you were standing at the, the edge of the back lawn here on the adjoining, um, and looking all the way back, it's, it's 95 feet minimum. At the, at the closest point on any one of our backed-up points, it's 95 feet from the adjoining's undisturbed line to where our, our home would be. And that's the minimum. Um, and this helped us really kind of figure out as well, uh, when you're talking about retaining walls, that's some of the thing we heard is, okay, are you going to big these, build these big ugly walls? Well, what we found after we did it was, is that on average, the wall height was going to be three to four feet. Yes, in a few spots where, you know, you, the ground dips down and goes back, you would go as high as 10 feet, but it wasn't as bad as what we thought originally. So what we're going to do there, uh, is typical here, is we'll provide some shrub plantings and, on, on the adjoining side of the bottom of the wall, to trying to help shield the wall in addition to, uh, the undisturbed buffer, and the additional plantings within the undisturbed buffer. Okay, Kendra did a magnificent job, so I won't reiterate what she'd already said, but I was prepared to, only thing I could add is that, uh, not only did our traffic impact analysis go through the town, the town consultant, to the district DOT office, but it also went to the DOT congestion management office. So everybody is really having a say in this, and, and we are really just the ponds, and they decide what we need to do. Uh, besides, uh, some of the, uh, interconnectivity that was already talked about, um, I'd just like to point out that this PUD, it, some of it was developed, and some improvements have already been made. For instance, um, Bass Lake Road was re-aligned as part of the original PUD. The, the light was put in as part of the original PUD. Some of the widening on the south side of Holly Springs Road was already put in as part of the PUD. What this plan shows you is what our committed widening portion is along our frontage. And you can see the town is, is, uh, has a lot of forethought. They make us go to this level of design upfront at the PUD stage, so they know exactly what's going to happen and how it's going to be done. And that's a credit to the engineering department. And for that, I will pass along the vision.
Thank you.
Good evening. In the beginning of the, uh, process in developing the vision for the Ramcot Village, and throughout the entire process, we have visualized this project as being a traditional neighborhood, much like the towns, villages, and small communities of yesteryears with, uh, tree-lined boulevards, parks, quiet places, sidewalks, trails, front porches, swings, bicycles, and more sidewalk traffic than cars. All elements, uh, that are encouraged under the existing PUD. I'm afraid I'm going to make a lesson in this process as well. A couple of other shots here that had to help in, in painting the picture for the vision. These photographs are from our Inside Wade project in Raleigh, that some of you, I think, have had a chance to visit, uh, and, but here you will see some of the community art that we would propose for Ramcot, some of the quiet places, and some of the approaches, uh, pedestrian trails and so on. Just a snapshot of the demographics for the area, uh, and the data that is represented here this evening is a three-mile radius from downtown Holly Springs. Uh, just to give you a, a bit of a, bit of a snippet of, of how the area is, is growing. Uh, about 33.7% of the residents in the area are between 35 and 54 years old, uh, with the smallest groups by age bracket being between 18 to 24 and 65 and over. Highest earning brackets for the area are between $35,000 and $124,999, call it 125. The highest groups of owner-occupied homes live in homes with values that range between $150 and $400,000. The largest single-household category by size is two persons, roughly 28%, followed by four persons at almost 22%, and three persons at almost 20%, respectively. Relatively speaking, that is almost 42% of the area. Relatively speaking, that is almost 42% of the area, which would have then, on average, about 1.5 children. Lennar has successfully developed two other communities in the triangle, similar to what is proposed for Ramcot Village, one in Raleigh that I mentioned Inside Wade, and the other in Morrisville called Kits Creek. The typical buyer for this lifestyle neighborhood is over 25, but under 45, has less than one child, may be married, and is just as likely to be unmarried. The average annual household income for the two neighborhoods that I mentioned a moment ago ranges between $125,000 and $150,000 per year. And home prices in the Inside Wade community range from $190,000 to $400,000, and in Kits Creek, from $260,000 to $391,000. Presently, the Holly Springs Elementary School and the Holly Springs High School are capped, but the Holly Ridge Middle School is not. According to the Wake County Public Schools system, a new area high school will open in 2015, and a new area elementary school in 2016. On its current pace and schedule, Ramcot Village will open for sales in late 2015 or early 2016, with its first closings not occurring until mid-2016, which would then trail or just precede.
I'm not sure what you said.
Would you like me to repeat?
Could you repeat that, please?
I can do that.
Siri wants to know.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks, Harry.
School-aged children in traditional neighborhood developments such as Ramcot Village have trended well below the average for the more typical residential subdivision, with fewer than 50 children out of the 307 families in our Inside Wade community, and less than 15 children out of the 38 families that have moved into Kits Creek thus far. We have found that traditional neighborhood developments, such as what is proposed here for Ramcot Village, have impacted schools less than typical subdivisions. A quick view of the product that we're proposing, and Laura has represented most of this, I have one other that is not, was not in the lineup that she had, but this would be the Foxglove collection. These would be the front-loaded townhomes. This would be the Frasier collection, and these are rear-loaded townhomes. The Catawba collection, which again is a front-loaded townhome. These are the Wainwright series of single-family detached homes. This particular plan is the Taylor, which is a master-down plan and is, incidentally, named for James Taylor. And this is the Draper collection, and it is the one, actually, that is, my pointer's, there we go, is this particular home here, which is represented in the 312 to 362 990. These are what we expect the release prices to be. These would be base prices, and would not necessarily include options. And as we moved through the Inside Wade community and are moving through the Kits Creek neighborhood, we have seen regular and frequent price increases on all of these series of homes. That concludes my portion.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, in closing, first of all, thank you for your time this evening. Just to kind of give you a brief summary of the amendment, you know, we're replacing the mixed-use zoning with the town C1 zoning, to simplify that for staff and for everyone involved. The 10 acres of mixed use is turning into 10 acres of residential at a lower overall density of three, the six units per acre. We're changing some details on the streets, we're adding some stormwater management ponds to the property, and that with the other things we talked about tonight, kind of make up the scope of our amendment. And we look forward to working with staff, with our neighbors, and with the council as we move forward through the process.
If I may, I did neglect to make one point. The homes in Ramcot Village would be maintained both exteriorly and landscaping by the homeowners' association, so that would protect and enhance the overall beauty of the community.
Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We're not quite ready for the motion yet. At this point in time, we're going to open a public hearing. Again, we have eight people to speak, maybe seven, because I think one already has, but I will call your name. Please come up and give us your name and your address, and again, try to keep your comments within three minutes, and once again, if someone else has said the same thing you're going to say, you can please pass. So at this point in time, a little public hearing, and Tom, you were on there number one, that's what confused me. So you're passing? Yes, okay. Next up is Tim Winchell.
Thank you, Tim.
If you could give one to the planning board, if you're passing these out, they need to be, it's a joint session.
You have extras?
Give them mine.
Well, you can give ours. It's more important that they have it, I think. Good point. You need another one?
Okay.
Take mine, too, Tim. Okay.
Yes, my name's Tim Winchell. I live at 112 Midway in Sunset Ridge North. Our property does not directly abut the development, but we're close to it, and I'm concerned about the impacts of this development to both the town and specifically the Sunset Ridge North existing community. There's been a lot of talk about some nice greenscape, some pretty pictures of houses, street scenes, and so forth. Let's talk about what is really going to happen out there. From Holly Springs Road back to the Sunset Ridge North is about 2,000 feet. The last 400 feet that borders Sunset Ridge North, and if you look at your map here, if you go from Flint Point, which is over on the right side, over to Steeple Ridge, in that area, I do a red line on your map. Well, that is approximately the high point of the property. From that red line down to Sunset Ridge North, it drops about 40 feet. And currently, that area is a dense hardwood forest. What the developers are proposing to replace that with is approximately 100 units, housing units, in that 400-foot stretch between Sunset Ridge North and that 400-foot band. 100 housing units in that area. He also doesn't point out that a good portion of those houses along the streets between Flint Point and Midway, at least, well, all those houses, the view for the residents is going to be of the alley, and the garage, and the back of the houses that are sitting 30, 40 feet above them. That compared to what the view is now, which is a dense hardwood hillside. So that's, to me, when we talk about a 20-foot undisturbed buffer, well, what are we doing? We're taking away 400-foot-wide hardwood forest, clearcutting it, those and all of this away, leaving a 20-foot strip, and then putting in 100 housing units looking down on Sunset Ridge North. I think we could do better than that. And I would, my understanding on the PUD is that you have a lot of flexibility, and that would also, I assume that would include flexibility in how wide a buffer you could put in, and what density of housing you want to put in there. Or, I don't even, I'm not sure if you could even change some of the land use. But I think what would be ideal in that area, in that 400-foot strip, in that heavy hardwood, heavily-dense forest, would create that whole area as an undisturbed green space. And that would both be a good buffer and also create natural, keep the natural vegetation there. One other point, they talk about the three retention basins as being quote-unquote "green space." Well, what those retention basins are going to be is down next to the Holly Springs, next to the Sunset Ridge North, they're going to be clearing these heavily wooded ravines and putting in a very unsightly stormwater retention basin. You could call that green space, but I certainly don't think that's an improvement. I understand, you know, the developments have to go in, and I don't really have much problem with, as you move towards Holly Springs Road.
Trying to finish up, you have five minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
But the last part along Sunset Ridge North, I think we can do better.
Thank you, Tim. Next is Megan, and I want to make sure I say this right, Sheldon Walker, in my clothes? And again, try to keep within three minutes, please.
Can you hear me?
Name and address.
My name is Megan Sheldon Walker, and I live at 209 Chris Mill Lane. My home is one that will border the new Ramcat development. It is disappointing that we have to be here to discuss buffers with a potential new neighborhood, but the developers have forced us to do so with the product that they have planned. It is essentially a copy of Inside Wade, a high-density development with numerous alleyways, has no bordering subdivisions, nor is it located next door to any schools. The developer envisions taking this product and placing it right in the middle of Holly Springs, laying down its alleyways against an existing neighborhood. My family moved to Holly Springs in 2006. We understood that the land behind us would at some point be developed. What we didn't anticipate was a neighborhood completely different from anything else in Holly Springs, with regards to its density and its ubiquitous alleyways. These alleyways are the antithesis of neighborly connectivity between subdivisions. They will bring sight and noise pollution to its existing neighbors in the form of cars backing in and out of garages at whatever hour, garbage trucks, garbage cans laid out, potential spotlights, and lack of any landscaping. The alleyways lined up close to our backyards invoke a sense of unease, as they are conducive to foot traffic whose origin may not be adjacent homeowners, and whose visibility by surrounding neighbors would be nonexistent. The proposed 20-foot undisturbed buffer with a semi-opaque Type B landscape screen with a 75-point value is inadequate. As winter approaches, it is clear that the trees are simply Q-tips that provide no buffering. While they will provide beautiful canopy and better buffering in the summer, more is needed. The semi-opaque Type B landscaping screen added to the buffer is intended for properties with similar land use intensities. Ramcat is nothing like Sunset Ridge North, let alone any other neighborhood in Holly Springs. If anything, an opaque Type C is more appropriate, which, and I quote, "is intended to be placed on lots in higher-intensity districts, which abut lots located in lesser-intense districts that may be adversely impacted by the lights, sounds, and regular operations of the high-intensity district." As part of the PUD approval process, the town must take into account the PUD's relationship with surrounding properties. Ramcat, in its current form, will have an adverse impact. The town, the developer, and the citizens of Holly Springs can work together to bring a more harmonious and compatible development to the town. Thank you.
Next up, Peter, and I want to pronounce the last name, so I'll let you do it, okay?
Hi, my name is Peter Villetson, and I live at 213 Chris Mill Lane, excuse me, where my family is celebrating nine years as residents of Holly Springs. We are eager for harmonious growth that maintains and even raises the quality of life that we citizens deserve. Indeed, the town has adopted a universal development ordinance, whose tenants include, and I quote, "lessening congestion in the streets, preventing the overcrowding of land, and distribute population and traffic in a manner that will avoid congestion and overcrowding, and will create conditions essential to public health, safety, and the general welfare." It is my belief that Ramcat does not abide by those decrees. Let us talk some specific numbers. At completion, the full Ramcat project, PUD, is expected to generate 6,500 new daily trips. Holly Springs Road, as of 2013, was handling 13,000 cars daily, as determined by NC DOT. According to the preliminary traffic impact analysis for Ramcat, the intersection of Holly Springs Road and Main Street is currently operating at a level of service rating of E, which is defined as unstable flow and operating at capacity, and with a delay of 55 to 80 seconds. With Ramcat, that level of service will drop to an F, defined as forced and breakdown flow and a delay of more than 80 seconds. Note that there is no level worse than F. It is proposed that Ramcat will be required to adjust the signal there, but according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, comprehensive signal retiming programs have documented benefits of just 7% to 13% reduction in overall travel time. While the impact on Holly Springs Road is bad, the traffic impact analysis fails to even examine the traffic impact on residential streets, which, according to the town, are defined as, and I quote, "a street where the primary function is to serve the immediately abutting residential land use, i.e. only local traffic generated by the residents in proximity of the street. In this classification, traffic volumes flowing from other intersecting residential streets shall not exceed the traffic volumes generated by the land use abutting the street." While we all understand the need and requirements of connecting streets between neighborhoods, this connectivity must exist between like neighborhoods so as not to create collector streets out of residential streets. This is a big deficiency of the traffic impact analysis. It expects traffic to use the main throughways, whereas traffic actually flows where there is least resistance, in this case being our residential streets. In fact, it will take a future resident of Ramcat a third less time to reach the athletic complex, and thus onto points such as Apex, Cary, Raleigh, RTP, by going through our residential neighborhoods, as opposed to going out the front entrance and along Holly Springs Road and North Main Street. Our residential streets are home to families, pedestrians, and children, with 140, 140 school-aged boys and girls living on just two short stretches of road that connect to Ramcat. Our residential streets are playgrounds for our kids. We have children getting together and playing ball on these streets, kids learning new tricks on their skateboards, and young boys and girls learning to ride their bikes. Folks stop their cars and chat with their neighbors, out for a walk, and kids run back and forth to play with their friends. Indeed, it's the postcard for one of the great qualities of Holly Springs that has drawn so many of us here. The town's own guidelines on PUD development indicate that the planning board, in recommending an amendment, should be guided in part by the PUD's relationship with surrounding properties. It is clear that this PUD will have an adverse effect not only on adjacent properties, but on the town itself. Mr. Mayor, the town council, planning board, developers, and citizens, together we must work to ensure that what is developed in Ramcat is less dense, more harmonious, and raises the quality of life for the town's residents. Thank you.
My turn.
We'll share, give one to the planning board.
Yeah, give him to the planning board, I think it's better than Brian, if you don't mind.
Brian, can you give one to the planning board?
Yeah, they have.
Have they got it?
Okay, good. Again, name and address, please.
My name is Brian Rumor, 1113 Sunset Grove Drive. My wife and I, Karen, moved here in 1998. Since then, we've had two boys, and have grown to love Holly Springs. Town council elected officials and employees of the town. We elected you to help protect us, serve us, and we are grateful. We know that you're constantly faced with difficult decisions, and this PUD is no exception. We know that you're constantly faced with difficult decisions, and this PUD is no exception. As a town, I think an earlier citizen mentioned tipping point, I really think we're there. No other neighborhood in Holly Springs brings the elements that Ramcat Village would bring. Not only the immediate homes that are adjacent to this PUD, but I think the general area around the neighborhood would face absolute depreciation of property. Looking at the pictures that I passed out, Inside Wade, which has been referenced by the developer several times, is on an island. The buffers are, I don't even know how to, probably, you know, quarter mile. The buffers that you're talking here are 20 feet. That's probably here to the door. The other photos in the handout show some photos I took Inside Wade, three-story town homes with back garages facing major entrances into what is a neighborhood that brings a lot of tax value to this town. I understand growth is important. We've made a lot of obligations for bonds and taxes to help pay for a lot of things that are coming on board. I'm for growth. I'm in the business of growth. But we have to do what the right thing is. We need to make the smart decision. One other photo at the bottom left is a photo at the entrance of Sunset Ridge North. This was cutting-edge back in the late 1990s and early 2000s. It was neo-traditional. Walkable neighborhoods, but it was done properly. Wasn't clear-cut, two stories, not three-story monstrosities that they're proposing for this neighborhood. The transition went from commercial condominiums, townhomes, Charleston Homes. It flowed very nicely. Not three-story townhomes adjacent right to the back of four or $500,000 homes. If it's built, maybe there'll be $300,000. We know you have a hard decision, and in closing, to make the transition, if this neighborhood is approved, we need to have some definite, higher-end, single-family homes adjacent. And one note, if I can be selfish, when I bought my property, I looked at the PUD, and I knew that the home that I was going to build and live in was a one-to-three dwelling unit per acre. They are proposing to change that and to put a six-unit, three-story townhome right behind my house. It's a tough decision. Planning Board, please take all these, these comments into account. Thank you for your time.
That's why we're here. Brent Harris, or Britt Harris, excuse me.
My name is Britt Harris. I'm at 316 Flint Point Lane. Thank you for your time. I've also lived in Sunset Ridge for 12 years with my family and two boys. I have similar concerns as the neighbors, as I'm directly affected by this. I always envisioned that I would have neighbors behind me. However, I didn't envision alleyway homes and seven houses between me and my one neighbor's lot and townhomes behind me as well. I believe that prior, prior to what Tim was saying as well, that ridge, and you could see some of the photos that I passed out, there is a natural forest and ridge above us. I believe this retaining wall is for, obviously for them to fill in some of the natural swells that are on the property now, and then, you know, place seven homes where a natural swell is and take down all the hardwood growth. So really, my main concern is the transition between neighborhoods, as everyone has talked about, going from a $450,000 home value down to much lower alleyway home construction. And then the 20-foot buffer is also a concern of mine as well. We're going from a hardwood growth forest down to nothing. Thank you for your consideration.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Again, just name and address, please.
My name is Sandy Joyce. I live at 5228 Sunset Walk Lane in Sunset Ridge South. My husband and I moved here from Virginia in April of 2013. Though relatively new, we have been active in the community already. He is a member of the Architectural Review Committee, and I am a director on the HOA Board and also the content coordinator for Sunset Living Magazine. I have met many people through the magazine in both the north and south communities. We were attracted to and chose Holly Springs and Sunset Ridge for the quality of life and the tree canopy. Many others choose Holly Springs also for the quality of life and a more rural feel with the convenience of a city nearby. It is our hope that Holly Springs retains that small-town feel, some tree canopy, and does not become another Cary, Morrisville, or Raleigh. Life is different in the world and in Holly Springs as well from that in 2001, when the Ramcat Village PUD was approved. Population here was just over 11,000, and growth was critical to help lure retailers and restaurants to the area to provide what citizens desired. Today, population is nearly 30,000. In 2001, there was no Lowe's Food Shopping Center with Sip, Dr. Vito, and other businesses. Today, we have Holly Springs Town Center and South Park Village on 55, and both are expanding. Holly Springs today, of today, is busier and more populated and still growing. Life is different. That there has not been much attention paid to the Ramcat Village PUD since its approval in 2001 is a testament to the busy life we all lead now. We focus on the immediate. When activated recently by Lennar's proposal, citizens and neighboring community residents became aware of the impact of a high-density community in the center of a much more developed Holly Springs. Meetings with the developers provided critical information on what the new community would look like and how it would function. This proposal of Lennar's products is an urban design in a suburban setting. Citizens are not satisfied that this density is a good match for the existing communities and for the center of Holly Springs. While the new zoning proposal for the reduced commercial area of that PUD and the removal of previously proposed apartments and condos is a good start, the density of the residential area and the plan for many townhouses and the small-size lots provide too many units for that area. Citizens and neighbors would like to see that plan more closely resemble the density, price point, and configuration of the adjacent communities, lessening the impact on roads, schools, and sightlines from neighboring properties. We would like to know, how many signatures does council and the planning board need to see that citizens of Holly Springs are opposed to the building of a high-density community in the center of town? What will it take to make the changes that citizens want? It may have seemed like a good idea at the time in getting more rooftops for Holly Springs, but that need has changed now. Development continues that we all, as we all know, and accept much of it, but more is not necessarily better. This proposed community at this location is not satisfactory. Life in the town and communities of Holly Springs is different in 2014. Thank you.
And last is Stephen Grentham.
May I endorse the correct comments?
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point in time, we will close the public hearing and ask the board for any further conversation or comments.
At this time, I think, move to pass this to the planning board next meeting.
Motion's been made to pass this to the planning board, as we discussed earlier, at the next meeting. Or two meetings, maybe, three meetings, who knows? There it is. Go ahead.
Motion to forward Ramcat Village PUD, major amendment 00PUD 05A05 to the Holly Springs Planning Board for review and recommendation at its next regular meeting, January 27, 2015. Second.
Motion's been made in second-hand favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, and thank you all for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And you may leave if you wish.
Were there two motions?
Pardon me?
Were there two motions?
No.
No.
Just one, just one.
I said up here, it was just two.
Had two? No, I only had one.
It says two on our.
No, that's just.
Uh, I'll just double-check.
Joni, was there two motions or just one?
No, it's one.
Just one.
It's the next one.
Okay.
He was ahead of himself.
Who seconded that motion?
What's that?
Who seconded that motion?
If there's any hot coffee, we just pour some.
Sorry?
Who seconded?
Hank and Jimmy.
They did, yeah.
Hank and Jimmy.
Who?
We're getting there.
Oh, yeah.
What would you show me on these pictures?
How's your coffee hole now? Well, I should ask him to get me some.
Their backyards. Yeah, they're using the backyard. Because this is not undisturbed, but already disturbed.
It maxed two dollars.
Give me a dollar for mine. I'll get some more. I will give you a dollar.
I appreciate it. That's the old setup.
Just know I'm black.
Did you?
Thank you so much.
At least I saved myself a dollar.
He's trying to get rid of you. I'm not sure. I think he's trying to get rid of you, though.
Oh, maybe.
Hang on just a second.
What a Ramcat is?
I didn't mean to.
All right, short timeout.
Just a reminder, on 8B, this is sworn testimony, and I have one, two people signed up.
Have they both been sworn in? Yes, no? Let me give you their names. Kurt and Taylor. Sworn in, sworn in? Very good, sir. Thank you. We'll be there in just a second. Waiting on Tim. Am I?
I realized he was gone.
I thought he was ordering pizza.
It's been a long, it's been a long day.
It's beginning.
All right, are we ready? Item 8B, public hearing. Thank you, sir, very much. I owe you a dollar. Public Hearing 14 SEU 05 slash 14 DPO 8, Security Self-Storage. Sean Ryan.
All right, so the next item before you tonight is a special exception use and a development plan that goes along with it to increase the amount of self-storage out at the Security Self-Storage property. So if you're familiar with the area, it's along North Main, right across from the car wash building, and this is south of the North Main Athletic Complex. The existing storage units are to the back. They're the single-story structures, and there's that small house in the front. So the proposal is to remove that small house and then add this additional storage building to the front. So the first part is for the special exception use request, and this is to allow 50, almost 51,000-square-foot self-storage mini warehouse building at the property located at 1101 North Main Street. This is a special exception use in the Business and Technology Zoning District. This is actually a conditional use district that was approved many years ago, and mini storage wasn't allowable use as part of the conditional use permit, so this is a valid special exception use request. The second part is the development plan, and I'll go into some of those details in just a little bit. To start off with the comprehensive plan, this area is designated as one of our mixed-use areas, which all of North Main Street is designated with that designation, which is encouraging a mix of office, commercial, and retail uses that are pedestrian-friendly and are compatible with adjacent uses. This site is kind of an anomaly along North Main Street. Typically, we have local business, commercial zoning districts. This one is a Business and Technology Zoning District, which is typically out in our business park, but because it was an existing use for so long, it is one of the only properties along North Main that has that zoning designation. With that in mind, the intent of the proposal was to create a building, and you'll see that with the architecture, that is compatible with what we see as future retail and commercial uses along North Main Street. So as far as the site plan, the total lot area is about four acres. The Business and Technology Zoning District typically requires a 50-foot setback from a thoroughfare. However, you can reduce that to thorough, to, excuse me, to 30 feet by providing the parking to the rear of the building and then by doubling the point value of the required buffer along North Main Street. 24 parking spaces are being provided as required, as well as a loading area for larger trucks. And then I'll switch to the landscaping plan here real quick. Foundation landscaping is being provided around the entire foundation of the building. And then we have this buffer here. Typically, we would require a B75 semi-opaque buffer. However, because they're reducing the front setback to 30 feet, we require that to be doubled to a B150 buffer. And this was an area of discussion that the planning board had. You know, why are we increasing the point value and hiding the building when we want buildings to be closer to the street along our commercial corridors? Just so happens that this is a, again, it's a rare property. It's business and technology. We normally find it in our business park, and so it is going to have a different feel from what our other commercial properties will see along North Main Street. These are the proposed elevations. This elevation here in the bottom is the elevation facing North Main Street. It'll appear as a three-story building from North Main Street, but it is actually a four-story building. It's 35 feet in height. It's primarily built out of brick and stone, and as you can see, there's a lot of glazing, especially on the corners, to provide that transition over into the planned commercial on either side of this property. And then there's a lot of decorative brickwork, this banding here and some accents along the top. Planning Board heard this request. They recommended approval, 8-0. We already kind of talked about the landscaping buffer, and the planning board has requested that a staff look into making sure that our landscaping requirements aren't hiding the buildings that we want to. But this was kind of a unique situation that we won't have anywhere else along North Main Street if it all develops as mixed-use or commercial. And then there were some questions about, you know, how the transition would go with the office being on the property, and the applicant stated that, you know, they'll have an office trailer.
Did they discuss in any way the building design and the architectural features of the building itself? Any comments that they had?
They did discuss, yeah, they did discuss the building design. They appreciated the architectural details of the brick banding, the amount of glazing. They talked about the sign location as well. With that landscaping, there was some concern that the sign might be hidden, but this is the proposed location for the sign, so a wall-mounted type sign that you'd be able to see hopefully above that vegetation.
But overall, they were.
They were pleased with the design, yes.
And is that stone?
In the middle on the column here? Yes, this is stone here. If you have any more questions for me, otherwise the applicant is here to address questions as well.
Questions, Sean? Okay, applicant, please come forward. And if you would be so kind, introduce yourself again and your address, please.
Good evening. I'm Taylor Blakely with Blakely Design Group. I'm the landscape architect planner for the, for the project. What I wanted to bring up at this point was the aspect that the planning commission brought up. They were very impressed with the, with the design of the building, and they, I think, were wishing that we could do something in lieu of putting the evergreen trees in front of the building. And I would just like that when we get, if it gets that far, we get through to the construction phase, to try to work with the staff, to try to do something where we take the large evergreen trees in front and use something smaller, maybe double the number, and go down the side of the building that would be next to the adjoining properties in the athletic park of the town, and try to work something out so we could... park of the town, and try to work something out so we could, you know, relocate those large evergreen trees in the front. And I know it's probably not something we can do right now, so I'd just like to work with the staff when we get to the construction.
Something along the fence that's along the backside?
Yes. Yeah, along, along the long side, going down, down the long side.
Well, one of the things about this design, you're not having parking in the front, and a lot of times that's what we're trying to hide with the vegetation. So here, we're not hiding a parking lot that's in front of that building. It's just the building itself.
Right.
Which, with the design, I don't think needs to be hidden. I think it would be better served, like you said, something along the other side by Don's auto or whatever.
Well, never.
I'm sorry, that's just my own opinion.
I would say we'll work with staff on that one. I think you already mentioned that.
Give us some flexibility.
Yeah.
That can be done.
Okay.
And I think the owner, Kurt Regensberger, wants to speak to you.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Nice design. Thank you so much.
Again, name and address, please.
Kurt Regensberger, 3628 Tryon Road, Raleigh. Thank you. We've been proud corporate citizens of Holly Springs for about 20 years now, and we're very proud to bring this building to Main Street. We really think it's going to help the landscape and the streetscape and improve the overall area. One concern I do have is the road widening. If you take a look at the screen, we have substantial road widening in an island. And what I would like to do is to request that your consideration in allowing us to take a fee in lieu instead of putting this improvement in place right now. And some of the reasons for that is that we anticipate unusual traffic because of this island essentially in the middle of Main Street without any other road improvements. One would be illegal left turns in front of the island to try to get into our facility, or U-turns of large vehicles right after the island to get back to our facility. And what we would like to suggest doing, as the cell tower lot did, would be to pay a fee in lieu of improvements, and then wait for improvements to come from the park all the way down at, in one, at one time. We think that would be better for traffic and better for the flow of traffic through that area. So we would ask your consideration. I know you can't make that decision, but we would like to work with the staff to try to do a fee in lieu instead of the improvement itself.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Counselor, are we correct in saying that we turn this order to staff to work and not make any further discussion on this at this point in time?
Yeah, you'd want a recommendation from, back from staff on that.
Yes. Okay. John, Laura? Okay. Right. I think that's it on the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing. And is there further questions or discussions from Sean? Seeing none.
Yep.
Go for it.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for special exception use petition 14-SEU 05 for, as specified in the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 4.01 Business and Technology, to allow for a self-storage mini warehouse in the BTCU Business and Technology Conditional Use District at 1101 North Main Street.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number two.
Having made findings of fact that the project meets the requirements to be granted a special exception use motion, special exception use motion to approve the special, special exception use number 14 SEU 05 to allow for a self-storage mini warehouse in the BTCU Business and Technology Conditional Use District at 1101 North Main Street. Wake County PIN numbers 0649-872410 and 0649-877451, and to, and the rest as stated on the screen.
I'm not going to try to read it all.
I don't blame you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right, and that's it. Thank you, Sean.
And basically, based on the conversation we had, staff will be able to work with, with the developer regarding the, as Tim had brought up, about the movement of some of the bushes and trees and so forth, so that's good.
Thank you.
Should work as a win-win for everybody.
Yep. All right. Agenda item 8C, public hearing, surprise. 14 SEU 06, Brook Manor Amenities Center. And Laura, you're back. Bless your heart.
Drink some water, so I'm good.
That's a southern state in there.
And this, again, is sworn testimony, but go ahead.
Special exception use is for the Brook Manor Amenities Center, which is a private recreation center for the approved and under construction Brook Manor subdivision along Bass Lake Road, along both sides of Bass Lake Road. You can see they've started here, and there's a lot of housing and some residents, and they've started to do the, the other side along, adjacent to Sub Farm in the recent weeks. They've started to clear that as well. In terms of the proposed site plan, you can see that they have smartly centered the pool and amenity kind of in the center of the lot, which is always nice, given the fact that it is adjacent to Sunset Ridge as well as their own residential lots. So they've lessened impacts by the placement of the amenity center. The proposal includes a swimming pool, pool house with restrooms, and of course, associated required parking. The setbacks are 20 feet along the front and the sides of 10 feet, but you can see that they've, they've met those. Parking required, 18 spaces, which they meet. Landscaping, they're required to do an A-20, which they've provided, and they have provided a necessary screening, which is in your packet of, of the row of bushes along the, the parking area, which is consistent, meets the screening requirements. Fencing around the pool deck will be a four-and-a-half black metal ornamental fence, which, of course, features controlled access, and a self-latching gate, which is what's required with North Carolina Building Code with, with the pool, so that meets requirements, and we always like to check that out. In terms of the proposed elevations, this is the pool house with the restrooms. So you can see it's proposed of a red brick foundation with, you know, taupe, hardy plank siding, and nice copper roof accents. Planning board did recommend approval. The applicant discussed with the board the emergency turnaround, which is right here, and I think Elizabeth has an update to that, that it sits, planning board.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Hello, Elizabeth. The update actually made it into your packet. We weren't sure it was going to be done in time, but they were able to provide us some additional information about turnaround templates and some additional things we needed for this. And so for right now, this meets the needs. There's currently planned for gravel. It will be depth enough that it will support fire vehicles. We're talking about some other types of material that might also work. We're working through that with construction drawing stage. That's something we can typically handle at that point, but it will meet the needs that we need for fire truck turnaround.
Yeah, I had attended the planning board meeting when this came up, and they spoke about, I guess, bricks of some sort that have holes in the, that grass can actually grow in between.
I think we would really like to see something that, it does not draw attention to the fact that it's a gravel turnaround. But we'll work with the, this would meet the, the need of the fire department, so it does meet the standard of that, but we'll work on something that may be a little bit more aesthetically acceptable in this area.
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. Does the applicant wish to speak, or do you have more?
Nick, I think he's fine.
Hmm?
Nick, do you wish to speak? He's here.
Name and address, please.
I'm Nick Antrilli. I'm with Withers and Ravenel, the engineer for the project. Just one correction to Laura, the fence is not four foot, six inches, it's actually six foot.
Six-foot fence.
I heard you. That's all.
I was just, I was just asking, as a former president of an HOA, the taller the better.
Oh, yeah. It's six foot now, and I'll be here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the fence wasn't vertically challenged.
Even you could get over that.
I know, I knew I was coming. That's why I said it first. Okay, go ahead. Don't hurry. Anything to add, Laura?
I don't have anything to add.
That's it.
I'll make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for special exception use petition 14 SEU 06 to allow for a private recreation center in the R-10 Residential District for Brook Manor Amenities Center at 350 Burkeby Way, as submitted by Withers and Ravenel dated 10, I'm sorry, November 10th, 2014.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number two. You'll have to read all of them.
Having made findings of fact that the project meets the requirements to be granted a special exception use, motion to approve special exception use petition 14 SEU 06 and Development Plan 14 DPO 9 to allow for a private recreation center in the R-10 Residential District for Brook Manor Amenities Center at 350 Burkeby, Burkeby Way, as submitted by Withers and Ravenel dated 11, 10, 14, with the following conditions as written on the screen.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Oh, we figured too much.
You'll be back.
Tag team was on.
Agenda item 8D, public hearing, 14 SEU 10 slash 14 VAR 20 slash 14 DP 12, Leslie Alfred Memm's House, Sean Ryan.
All right, so we're all familiar with the location of the Memm's House, just right behind us here on Avant Ferry Road. There's actually three parts to this one: special exception use, variance, and development plan. So first part is a special exception use to allow for a banquet facility to take place in the house. And you may remember, we had a similar request before a couple of years ago. The improvements were never made, and so that expired, and so now this is up before you with a new applicant seeking to open up a banquet facility in the house. This is the proposed site plan here. As you can see, they're planning on doing some extensive landscaping work to re-landscape the property, doing some exterior maintenance and interior maintenance to bring the, the property back up to code. All of the site work has been approved by Capital Area Preservation, with the exception of a last-minute addition of this future deck area into the back of the property. It's my understanding that the deck probably will not happen right away, but they wanted to get it on the site plan so that in the future, if they wanted to add that deck, they wouldn't have to come back and amend their special exception use to do that. A condition of approval has been added that was not on the original list of conditions, that they receive a certificate of appropriateness from Capital Area Preservation before they go ahead and pull the building permit for that, for that deck, and that was a request that Cap had made to me this afternoon. The variance request before you tonight is for their parking requirement. So as a banquet facility, they are required to have 30 parking spaces, but because they are in our downtown, they can reduce that by 50% to 15 parking spaces. They have been in discussions with the church to be able to use this shared area across from the property that's 11 spaces, and then there's four additional spaces to the back that are currently gravel. We require, when you transition from residential to commercial, that all parking areas be paved. They are requesting to not pave those parking spaces, and Capital Area Preservation is also not in favor of having those paved because of the historical nature of the property. The planning board recommended approval, 8-0, and they had no concerns. They were excited about the project.
No concerns at all?
None at all. The applicant is here if you have any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any as well.
Does the applicant wish to speak? No? No, I have one for you.
Okay.
Maybe, go ahead. Do the applicants wish to speak? Name and address, please.
Certainly. I am Priscilla Irwin. My address is 900 East 6 Sports Road in Raleigh. Burke and I are partners, and between the two of us, we have more than 10 years of experience with weddings and events. And when this opportunity presented itself, we fell in love not only with the house, because it's spacious and it is perfect for weddings and events, but also the town that it is in. We're really, really excited, and our main objective with taking on this project is to, to provide obviously a wedding and event venue for the area, but to also restore and revitalize and maintain the historic nature of the property. We're really, really excited to be here.
I do have a question for you. In discussions with, with the church, discussions with everybody else, did, is there any changes proposed with the road coming in?
There aren't any changes proposed, and John is actually here to speak on behalf of what we came to the agreement with.
That's fine. Call him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Sean?
Sean, how many parking spaces total?
15. So 11 across from the front entrance there that they would share with the church.
That just seems very small for a banquet facility.
We require one per five person of capacity, so it's based on their capacity. They've told us what their capacity is, so we calculated it based on that. And then, of course, it does seem smaller because they're in the village district, so they get to utilize our public parking spaces in addition to that.
Otherwise, they'd have to have 30 spaces.
They would have to have 30 on the property that were.
They would figure 150, guess? Is that what I'm, is that?
That's about, yep.
Going around the corner from the monument, there's extra parking, too. There's, I'm sure there's 15 or 20.
Right, there's that gravel area to the back.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Pretty close to that big public one.
Yeah. Yes, they are within walking distance of many public parking spaces.
At this point in time, then, we'll open the public hearing. And John Adcock. Come forward, please, and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, and Town Board. My name is John Adcock. I'm an attorney, also a member of the church, but I'm here in my representative capacity for the church tonight. My address is, my office address is 202 East Academy Street in Fuqua Marina. We look forward to supporting, the church looks forward to supporting this project. The applicant's approached us about the parking that you've discussed. There are currently 11 spaces in an area. I don't know if you might can put that map back up in the site plan. Might assist my presentation if I can show there. Okay, the, several years ago, the church and the owner of the Memm's property and the owner of the property that now the town owns, behind the church, came to terms with a cross-access easement agreement. That access agreement deals with pretty much the access road, the area around the monument, and then an area extending back to the back property line between the Memm's House and the, the church property. As a part of that, the church granted non-exclusive rights to the Memm's property to park in those spaces that are identified. They're actually located on the church property, but directly across the entrance from the Memm's House. And as a part of this process, we've cooperated with the, with the applicants, and we come to terms on a document, we refer to it as a memorandum of understanding, that pretty much, you know, the cross-access easement that is there now permits the parking there. But there's some, you know, we're trying to get along, and we have two very high-intense land uses that are in close proximity to each other, and we look forward to both of them being very successful. But we're going to try to work out those kinks that we may have, have a good dialogue with, with our new neighbors, and look forward to supporting their project.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions, John?
None whatsoever.
The only, the only issue that I, that I have, and it's not a dispute or by any means, but we want to make sure that the agreement we get in place with the applicant matches up with the, the actual applicant. I've discussed this with, with Priscilla.
This, Mr. Barber?
Well, I, we've discussed that. I'm not sure exactly who the applicant is, the actual legal entity that's the applicant or them individually. John and I have discussed that. Just want to make sure that whoever the applicant is, our agreement is in place with that entity or those people. That's all I ask.
Understood. Okay.
Dot your i's and cross your t's.
Thank you.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
At this point in time, a closed public hearing. Is there further questions or comments, Ashan?
No.
Seeing none, I think we have three motions. Am I correct? There's one. There's one.
I'll make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for special exception use petition fourteen SEU ten as specified in UDO section three dot oh three A, Town Village District, to allow for a banquet facility at one hundred Avant Ferry Road, Wake County PIN zero six four nine nine two zero zero one one, as submitted by Orangery Events.
Second.
Motion been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously, number two.
Motion, come ahead, Chair.
Oh, a motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for a variance from the Unified Development Ordinance, section seven point oh four D two, surface of parking areas to allow for the four existing gravel parking spaces to remain unpaved in conjunction with development plan fourteen DP twelve, Leslie Alfred Mim's House, as submitted by Orangery Events.
Second.
Motion been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously, number three.
I'll make the motion to approve suggested motion number three as stated on the screen.
Very good. Motion's been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I have a quick, I have a quick question, how do you, is Orangery?
Orangery?
Orangery. Okay, Orangery, I was wondering how to pronounce it.
It's like Tarjay.
Orangery.
Tarjay, yeah.
Orangery. Thank you.
You can buy that at Tarjay, too. Never mind.
Look what I started.
All right, here we go. Item eighty, public hearing fourteen SEU oh four, Tapline Growler. Laura Holloman is back again. You getting overtime for this? Probably not.
It's comp time, didn't you know?
Comp time. Gina's here, she heard it.
Do you be determined of when that will happen?
I'll talk to Gina tomorrow. We'll see.
Fourteen SE fourteen for Tapline Growler for a retail beer establishment specializing in the sale of craft beer intended for off-site consumption. However, because there will be an opportunity for patrons to sample the beer, it is classified as a tavern use and required to go through the special exception use process. This sounds familiar to you.
It is.
It is. The business was originally approved over at Village Center Shops, but the applicant has since changed locations, and because special exception uses are tied specifically to a location, they're required to go through this process again, though his business plan has not changed. The proposed business will be approximately thirteen hundred square feet with, within the existing retail storefront of Main Street Square along Kentworth Drive here. So this is the Dunkin' Donuts building, and this is the building where you have that gym on the corner, Tiki was exactly, you've got Thanks a Latte on the end, I think there's another medical business there now, so that's where we're talking. Parking will be utilized through existing parking located along the front and rear. The entire Main Street Square part originally was approved under a shared parking scenario, so it was the intent and certainly will be that the entire parking areas are to be used by the entire development. Of course, being that there will be available parking in the rear, you have off-peak hours with apartment dwellers going to work, as well as what would be considered peak hours with businesses. No exterior modifications to the existing building are requested, so all will be completely indoors. In terms of planning board, they did recommend to approve unanimously, however, they did ask about parking availability, and after explained that the shared parking intent of Main Street Square, they understood that and...
That's a pretty tight area.
Yeah, it really is.
It's a tight area, but, excuse me, the thing about Main Street Square is it's walkable, and people are going to have to get used to walking.
That's one way to put it, and I like the way you did it.
She just solved all of our problems.
Yeah.
So there, Ollie.
Is it, will you only be able to access it from the front?
There's, there's the front here, and there is also a walkway in between these two buildings that will certainly, patrons that park in the rear and other areas will be able to walk through here.
Be able to walk around the building.
Okay. Other questions or comments, Laura?
Their primary businesses at night would be people coming in at night.
The applicant will answer that.
Okay.
Is, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes.
In the meantime, I assume it's really, the only reason we're here looking at this is just because if you want to buy a growler of beer and you want to say, what does that taste like?
Right.
You get to take a taste, and that's pretty much it, there's no hanging out and all that sort of stuff, and that's basically, it's, we're going through this just so someone can take a taste of what they're buying.
Correct.
Pretty much, yeah.
So it's not a long time sitting in the parking lot.
So, name and address, please.
Justin Labcap, one hundred Grassy Valley Road here in Holly Springs, two seven five forty zero.
Excuse me just a second, as we did before, we're actually opening the public hearings, so.
Okay.
Just for the record.
All right, well, good evening again, back from October a few months ago. What was the, one of the first questions, I know there was a couple of them thrown out there, so. As far as business hours or peak business hours?
Yeah, the peak business hours, I said, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I think it will vary, we're looking really for our business to actually be open no later than eight, nine o'clock at night, so to answer several of the concerns, it is not intended to be a long-term stay. If any of you have visited a winery in the past, it's very similar to that experience with craft beer. It's taste, purchase, maybe you have a glass of your favorite one while you're waiting to get your growlers filled, again, it's not intended to be Sunday football watching for six hours. You know, it's really intended to be a small establishment where you can taste and purchase and, and go.
Okay, so nine o'clock, the question I have is, that is an extremely tight area, I've been over there at nighttime, relative to parking. Have you worked with the, with the apartment group over there relative to any kind of study on how much parking you actually have at that time of night?
As far as a type of study, no, I know that the question has, has been raised. I've personally, through going through this process and, and looking into this location, have done several drive-throughs in there to kind of look at traffic flow at different times of the, of the days. You know, again, I feel like it's adequate, it was a concern of mine from a business perspective, it was a concern of mine, but I feel, from what I've observed, and also through conversations with, with several parties, I feel like it will be adequate. There's also, I know on here, there's a building, if you're facing the front door of the property, there's another building to the left that also has a completely large parking lot back there as well. So it's not just the parking behind this actual building, and as Laura stated, people need to get used to doing some walking.
She did it so well.
It really is a very tight area.
It is, it absolutely is.
Defense of making sure that your business makes it.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I definitely appreciate the concern, it was, it was certainly one of my top concerns when we were...
But usually, how long do you think would, would customers stay at your establishment?
We, we guess, we would guess that there would be no, no longer than a thirty to forty-five minute stay at, at that most. You know, you may have some people at the, you know, that want to stay a little bit longer, but again, it's, it's not going to be laded with TVs, there's not going to be, you know, all that stuff everywhere, it's really just not intended for that. Really, our feel is, is to go for a low-key coffee shop type of feel, where if somebody doesn't want to come in and get a little bit of work done for, for, you know, past thirty to forty-five minutes, maybe an hour, they can, but after that, they'll probably get pretty bored. So, again, it's, it's intended to...
Estimated number of taps you're planning to have?
Uh, we're looking at twenty-five to thirty right now, probably be right in that range. It's about all we can accommodate with that type of space in there.
That would be about right.
That's a nice development to do something.
Yeah.
It is, absolutely, we, we have...
So a lot of community stuff there.
Yeah, my, my wife and I, who you, you guys met back in October, we're, we're very excited to be in that area, I think a lot of potential there, I know there's some growth going on in there as well. You know, I do know that some of the residents in there have expressed some interest in having something or somebody come in where they can have a little bit of a hangout without it being the typical bar establishment, and I feel like we do fit that bill for them, which we're very excited to be able to provide for them.
I think you'll also find a lot of walkers in that area.
There are, that's, well, there really are, Decky.
Well, they are, I know.
I'm facetious.
I'm serious.
I actually think that this would have much less of an impact on the parking than, let's say, the coffee shops, some of the doctors' offices, I think there's, there's a financial planner there, which, when you park there, you're going to be parked for an hour or so. Here, fifteen minutes, maybe?
Twenty, maybe, yeah, exactly.
It'd be much more, you know, turnover on the spot as opposed to what's there already.
I agree.
When you buy your beer, you want to take it home cold.
That's right. And fresh.
And fresh.
All right.
I was going to say the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you, sir.
At this point in time, technically, we'll close the public hearing. Any further comments or, or questions of Laura? She's probably getting tired of standing up and sitting down and standing up and sitting down.
Good exercise.
That's right.
Wish we could do that.
Yeah. All right, we have two motions, as I recall.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for special exception use petition fourteen SEU fourteen to allow for tavern in the Main Street Square planned unit development for Tapline Growler at eleven ten Kentworth Drive as submitted by Tapline Growlers LLC dated October thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
Second.
Motion been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously, number two.
Having made findings of fact that the project meets the requirements to be granted a special exception use, motion to approve special exception use petition fourteen-seu fourteen to allow for tavern in the Main Street Square planned unit development for Tapline Growlers at eleven ten Kentworth Drive as submitted by Tapline Growlers LLC dated October thirty-first, twenty fourteen with the following conditions as stated on the screen.
Second.
Motion been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. This is located in town limits and has been for some time. That is the request before you tonight is for annexation.
Questions? Slam dunk?
Nope.
Sounds fine.
It's pretty straightforward, very questly.
At this point in time, we'll open and close the public hearing.
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance eight fourteen oh eight, annexing ten point seven four plus or minus acres owned by HH Hunt LLC, and more particularly described as Wake County PIN number zero six four nine dash one six dash six six zero six into the corporate limits of the town of Holly Springs.
Second.
Motion been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, all right, they, I'm sure that everyone is happy you did that, because corresponding to that, I've got a rezoning petition for...
Shall I say something?
So, as it so happens, part of that area. The town has received a request to rezone altogether twenty-eight point four three acres located along the north side of New Hill Road from, and pay attention to how I explain this, RMF fifteen, which is this area, and of course, the freshly anointed R thirty with what was just annexed here to R eight conditional use residential. The rezoning request is, of course, I just mentioned, for a conditional use district. This district allows for the petitioner to place specific conditions on the property that are more restrictive than the minimum zoning regulations. So these are those more restrictive zoning conditions. Minimum building size of two thousand square feet, facade modulation minimum of twelve inches in depth, roof overhangs, twelve inch minimum on all elevations, decorative garage door, front-loaded, no vinyl exterior building material, composite PVC trim is allowed, architectural shingles in a covered porch or portico. Terms of the zoning map, you can see here, this, pretend this is R thirty, this is the existing parent map of RMF fifteen, they're requesting to, what we call downzone it to R eight into a less dense district that would allow for single-family residential only as opposed to the current district of RMF fifteen, which allows for multifamily units up to fifteen units per acre. Terms of the future land use plan, you can see how it designates it as residential, but again, we want the more dense areas within our community growth centers, which in this case is the Regional Center of Holly Springs Town Center, that's why we've got the existing zonings of RMF fifteen adjacent to there. This has been zoned RMF fifteen for a long time, and today it probably wouldn't be if they were to come in, but it is what it is. So, as staff, we were very pleased to see it transition to, to single-family, which we think is a more apt transition than totally an RMF fifteen, which we wouldn't want to see a dense fifteen units per acre there ultimately. The proposed zoning district of R eight will allow for detached single-family dwellings. In terms of the maximum density, it would be four and a half units an acre, allowing for a minimum lot area of eight thousand square feet with minimum setbacks along New Hill Road of fifty feet. And I will tell you that, of course, you've got the nice landfill area in the back, but it'll be a, a nice screen for the residents, residents of this as well. Any questions of me before I turn over to the applicant?
Laurel, the, the outline of the rezoned area is, yeah, that, it's, it's, it's not the whole square, it's going up and around, is that the area that goes around the school area, is that why that's like that?
The, the school area, this is, the school area is additionally, goes essentially like this. So they've chosen to retain a portion of the properties RMF fifteen and to rezone for R eight.
So low density at the back and higher, possible higher density at the front later on?
Exactly, along Holly Springs, which I will tell you that, of course, you've got the school here, this is phase five of Twelve Oaks, which is townhomes, so multifamily dwellings. So in terms of transition areas, you know, you've got the, the R eight conditional use here, RMF fifteen, of course, the high-intent school, and then, of course, all of this along the south side of New Hill Road is designated as a business park.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
So we've pretty much, looking at that whole site, just completely reduced the density.
Correct.
Put that in bold and underlined.
Yes, yes, reduce.
Yes. I don't get to say that very often.
Is the applicant here?
Applicant is here, and I will mention that the...
I think we're doing good so far, right?
Planning board did unanimously recommend approval, discussed the surrounding land uses as we just did, and, and ultimately agree the zoning was a good fit and was happy that it was going to R eight.
Excellent.
Good, thank you.
At this point in time, then, we'll open and close the public hearing for discussion. Seeing none.
Motion to accept the following statements as being true. The requested zone map change from RMF fifteen, R thirty, to R eight CU is consistent with the Vision of Holly Springs Comprehensive Growth Plan since the future land use plan map indicates this property as residential and the R eight CU residential conditional use district allows for single-family residential development as written on the screen, if you need the rest of it.
Second.
Motion been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously, number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance fourteen REZ thirteen to approve and enact zone map changes petition number fourteen REZ thirteen to change the zoning of plus or minus twenty-eight point four three acres of a portion of Wake County PIN zero six four nine zero six six oh one four and Wake County PIN zero six four nine one six six oh six from RMF fifteen, residential and R thirty, residential to R eight CU residential conditional use as submitted by HH Hunt Schaefer LLC with the following conditions as written on the screen.
Second.
Motion been made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gen item eight H, public hearing, believe it or not, fourteen CPA oh-two, three hundred West ARP Street Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Sean.
Gee, we're almost done with the first page.
I know. I said it was a record, right?
Mm-hmm. All right, so this property is three hundred West ARP Streets, uh, adjacent to the, uh, Dorothea Dick's Assisted Living Facility, just at the end of Avant Ferry Road. Uh, the specific request before use to change the future land use designation in the Village District Area Plan from its current designation as residential to mixed use. Um, the property is currently covered under our general townwide comprehensive plan, but then it's further specified in our village district plan. Um, the overall town comprehensive plan designates this property as mixed use. Um, it's in the community growth area, which, um, the intent of that growth area is to create a mix of uses that are compatible, uh, walkable area, mix of high-density residential, commercial, and retail uses. Um, then you can come over to our V DAP plan, and as you can see here on the map under the star, the property is currently designated as, uh, being residential, uh, which is intended to provide just for residential uses and, and not to allow for any sort of mixing of commercial or retail uses into that. Um, across the street, you have the, uh, Future Mims Park property, um, which will probably create some, some, some activity in the area and, and further, uh, produce that mixed-use environment that we're trying to create. And then you have the multifamily, which is directly adjacent to this property, and multifamily is a component that we, um, like to see in our mixed-use designation. Um, the, the residential designation actually doesn't really call for any sort of multifamily uses, it's just single-family, whereas the mixed-use designation starts to bring in that multifamily component. So, although this is designated as residential, it's serving as a mixed-use, uh, as part of our village district area. Uh, the planning board heard this request, they recommended approval eight-zero. Um, there was a discussion as to whether or not the intent of mixed-use was, um, vertical mixed-use buildings or, um, general area-wide mixed-use, and, uh, we explained that it's trying to get mixed-use in, in the entire area, not necessarily in a, in a single building. Um, so as long as the use is compatible and providing, um, a use that's compatible for adjacent properties, then you're achieving the mixed-use. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and the applicant is here as well.
Questions, Sean? Seeing none. Does the applicant, would you speak? No? Okay. Motion. I'm sorry, open and close. Motion.
Motion to adopt resolution fourteen dash thirty-five to approve and enact Comprehensive Plan Amendment fourteen CPA zero-two to change the village district plan future land use designation of Wake County PIN zero-six-four-nine-eight-two-six-seven-six-eight totaling point-four-six acres from residential to mixed-use as requested by Holly Springs Counseling Center.
Second.
What's been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving right along. Gen item eight I, public hearing, fourteen R E Z sixteen, three hundred West ARP Street, again, Sean. This might go together here a little bit.
Sticking to the same property. Uh, this request now is to, uh, request a rezoning from the current zoning designation of R fifteen residential to our T V Town Village zoning district. Uh, you're familiar with the, the current state of the comp plan, uh, the general comp plan, of course, calling for mixed-use, and now the, uh, village district area plan also calling for mixed-use. Um, and just to reiterate, the intent is commercial, retail, um, higher-density residential, all coming together to form that mix of uses for the overall area. Uh, the current zoning is R fifteen residential, uh, which would allow for single-family residential development on this property, um, and the proposed zoning is T V Town Village, which would allow for a wide, a wide range of commercial, office, retail, um, townhome-type uses as well. Uh, the planning board heard this request, um, they discussed how it would impact adjacent residential, uh, properties, uh, explained that, you know, really, the, the T V district is designed to be compatible with adjacent residential zoning district. It's designed to be walkable, buildings are designed to be of human scale and feet, and, um, have features that are inviting to pedestrians and are compatible with residential around the periphery. And they were, um, pleased with that answer.
Questions, Sean? And or comments? Seeing none. We'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Further discussion? Motion? Two.
I'll make the motion to, um, to approve suggested motion one, number one on the screen.
Second.
Motion been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number two.
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance fourteen R E Z thirteen to approve and enact zone map change petition fourteen R E Z thirteen to change the zoning of point-four-six acres of Wake County PIN zero-six-four-nine-eight-two-six-seven-six-eight from R fifteen residential to T V Town Village as submitted by Holly Springs Counseling Center.
Second.
What's been made, second in all favor? I'm sorry.
There's a typo on the screen. It should be fourteen R E Z sixteen, not thirteen.
Say again, please.
The typo, it should be fourteen R E Z sixteen, not thirteen.
Sixteen versus thirteen?
Yes.
Okay, I will, uh, I will amend my motion for, to make it fourteen R E Z sixteen.
Okay. Here, second?
Second.
Second.
What's been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Sean, for that. Gen item eight J, public hearing, fourteen R E Z fourteen, five oh-one Raleigh Street. Laura is back again.
You guys have been very busy.
Oh, I know.
Yes.
We need more public hearings, Gina, please. Not enough.
That's right. It'll... Be careful what you wish for.
Just make sure they're in a walkable area.
We'll be back.
All right, go.
Sure. Uh, rezoning petition tonight is fourteen R E Z fourteen, which is, uh, site located at five oh-one Raleigh Street, uh, more specifically at the intersection of Grigsby and Raleigh. Uh, the request tonight is to rezone this parcel shown in red from R ten residential to T V Downtown Village. It's approximately point-seven-five acres in size. Terms of the zoning map, you can see here, it's R ten. Uh, I've got adjacent residences along the north side of Grigsby that are R fifteen, and of course, uh, the church here is also zoned R ten, and the rest is, uh, this baby blue color, which is Town Village. Future land use plan map designates this, uh, parcel as mixed-use. In terms of what that means, it's, of course, within the overall village district area plan, which recommends that the district continue to develop and over time introduce a greater mix of land uses that are appropriate and located in suitable locations to complement, uh, existing and planned development. Uh, so Sean mentioned, uh, the Ballentine Growth Core area. You know, this is our core area of town, so this is where you see the largest influx of mixed-use, uh, designations. The intent, of course, is to build a strong, uh, downtown core area that we presently lack. Uh, so this is what that parcel, uh, will do. Um, it's, it's intended to help support that, uh, intent. In terms of the Town Village zoning district, uh, what does that mean? Of course, it's the zoning district reserved to our downtown area, uh, intended to promote, of course, the development of the core area that I just stated. So, it encourages elements like a traditional village, uh, center, uh, including storefront retail, professional offices, and dwelling units that are located in, in upper stories of mixed-use buildings, but of course, also allows for, uh, multifamily dwellings like townhomes, uh, are also permitted under this zoning district. Uh, development standards in this district are intended to encourage, uh, pedestrian-oriented, uh, design and maintain appropriate pedestrian scale. Uh, the proposed zoning district, uh, change, um, will have some impacts on adjacent properties, uh, since they're currently zoned residential, uh, just discussed, you know, these that are presently zoned R fifteen residential. Uh, of course, uh, existing today, uh, parts of Grigsby, which are adjacent to this, are predominantly, uh, single-family residential at this time. There's, of course, the, uh, White House here, and then there's, uh, duplexes and duplex here and smaller, uh, single-family residential that have, of course, been, been there for a long time. Terms of planning board, uh, the planning board did recommend unanimously eight oh to approve, uh, discuss the Town Village zoning district, uh, zoning designation, and ultimately, uh, thought that it was appropriate because this parcel is located within the village district area plan. The board also discussed potential traffic impacts, um, adjacent propeller dude come and speak at the meeting and discuss potential traffic impacts, um, and the board discussed, uh, that the zoning could allow for commercial development on the subject property. Uh, however, they were satisfied that, that at the time of site plan submittal, uh, it would go through the appropriate staff analysis and would be considered a special exception use and therefore would be subject to planning board and ultimately Town Council review and approval. So, important point, the last round of V D O amendments said that every project in downtown, special exception use, you stress the importance of wanting to see every downtown development project. We heard you, and that was the change that we made.
This is a side comment, uh, I, I don't think you mentioned this. If you did, I apologize. A rezoning petition that has a valid protest petition accompanied with it can be approved only by three fours, three quarters, vote of the Town Council members, not the traditional simple majority vote. Specifically, four out of five council members will need to vote in the affirmative of the motion for it to carry.
That's absolutely correct. It has, the rezoning has a valid protest petition. I wasn't sure if John was going to bring that up, but it has, we have gone through the staff analysis, it is valid, so therefore, as you stated, Mayor, it will need a supermajority four-to-one vote for approval.
At this point in time, we're going to open the public hearing. Tom, did you want to speak again? Please come forward again for the record, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the minutes, my name is Tom Spalding with Spalding and Norris, and I am here representing the applicants tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Richmond, um, who are two residents in town. Um, they started their journey, uh, towards this site by trying to find a spot where they could open up a ice cream, sweets, cookies kind of a, a facility. Um, this site was available, so the first thing they did is came down to the town and said, is this a viable place where I can come and, and, and build a shop and, and, you know, proceed with our dream of investing in the town and, and bringing business to the downtown area? And the answers were yes, but you're going to have to go through all of these certain steps. Um, and the caveats are is, you know, the first step being zoning, but please keep in mind that there are downtown architectural requirements that are very strict and that you'll have to, you know, have the look of the downtown area. Um, so here we are at the first step of that is being before you, wanting to rezone this, this site so that they can proceed with the next step. Um, and they're very anxious to invest, they live here, they, they want to start a business here, and they greatly appreciate your support.
Okay? Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Charles and Christine Kelly, thank you for being patient. You weren't put last on the list for any particular reason. We always save the best to last. How was that? Did I get out of that? And again, just for the record, names and address.
Sure.
Sure.
Charles and Christine Kelly, we live on two oh-one Grigsby. We've been there for twenty-two years, and we've seen quite a few changes. Um, our concern with this rezoning request is that we feel the zoning change in itself will alter the traffic volume and, and safety considerations of the street that we live on. Um, we see the traffic every day. The increased volume that we would anticipate from a business, uh, coming into the area of, would exceed the capacity. And we see this from our porch. Um, we, we observe this on a daily basis, so we're not, uh, we don't need to rely on a traffic analysis to, to relay what, what we see on a daily basis. Um, we would also recommend, and we realize that we're kind of behind the eight ball because the way the town normally operates is to conduct the traffic analysis after the zoning request has been made and approved, and then when you start looking at the site and, or the site plan to see what's actually going to happen, then you start looking at what the traffic is going to do. We would propose that the town look at this a little bit more holistically, and by looking at the traffic pattern or the traffic impact at the time of the zoning request, so that you can see a more holistic, um, impact of the traffic as opposed to looking at it on a parcel-by-parcel basis, which is, uh, basically what we're looking at here. So, we'd also like to state some of our concerns about the, the zoning request, the, the change, um, the, the process that, that we've been exposed to. Um, we were invited to the, to the meeting that the petitioner's held, we appreciate that meeting very much. Um, their business model included the fact that, um, the, one of the business owners would be a town hero. Um, we were kind of concerned that they were trying to, um, felt that information would influence the planning board, possibly influence the town into a more favorable position for the, for the petition. Also, uh, we were made aware of the, uh, the meeting recap that was sent out, um, indicated that with the exception of two people, that would be Christine and I, uh, everybody else who was in attendance at the meeting seemed to be in favor of the, uh, of the proposed business model. That was in our recollection. Um, there were five people at the meeting. Four of us are neighbors on Grigsby, uh, we're, we think that we are all thinking alike. The fifth person was the, um, the owner of the, uh, the car wash on the corner, and he seemed to be pretty neutral to the whole thing, so. Um, one other thing is that we're, we're a little confused, um, that the petitioners currently don't own the property. Um, it was confusing to us to see on their application that, um, they're, it's our understanding that they're, they're looking to get the, uh, approval for the purchase contingent on the rezoning of the property in favor of their business plan. So, we're, you know, that's just a, a point of confusion for us, and we want to make sure that, uh, that wasn't a point of confusion for the board. Mm-hmm.
So, as you know, the, the road has been there since, I don't know how long. We've been there twenty-some years, the road's never been wide, and in fact, once the sidewalk came in and the ditches, it's even more, there is no room for cars to park. So, it, it's, today, that road barely handles the traffic. When the church is there, you can't pass by, our driveways get parked, like locked in, and the petitioner's were saying, you know, um, and, and we understand even the town said that it'll be up to them to fix the road. Well, that's a long road, and there's a lot of issues with, with traffic today, and that's our biggest concern, is that adding something else at the end, thinking that they could change something, then really, that, that road is a town road. We would want the town to actually look at the traffic situation today. Somebody parks on the side, there's nowhere else to park, you can't pass by there, it, it's a mess. So, we really think that having that property, which is residential, turned to commercial is a detriment to that downtown spirit. Maybe down the road, if you fix the roads or fix the walkway or change what's going on, but right now, that is not the time or the place to put a commercial on.
So, in summary, we're, we're in opposition to the zoning change itself, um, and we would like to, to recommend, uh, that the, uh, the town consider postponing, uh, any decision until some sort of analysis of the traffic, the existing traffic, um, on that roadway is taken into consideration, so that the impact of the zoning change could be taken into consideration at that time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kendra, we didn't talk about this, but do you want to comment real quickly on, you and I did talk about it a little bit, about doing a traffic analysis study before we know what's there?
Right. We, um, typically, like right now, if we were to do some sort of traffic study, this is rezoning, there's a, a variety of uses that could take place in that area, and without knowing the square footage, the use, the building impact, those sorts of things, that's what you base the traffic study on, and that's how you get actual trip generation. So, at this point, anything that the applicant assumed and paid for, once it came in, it would have to be revised, and so that's why we typically do not do that at this stage of the game. Um, and this C I A will be a little bit different once they get to looking at it. It's not so much your traditional, what turn lanes need to be added, this would be more of just a traffic circul- of just a traffic circulation study. There's never been a traffic study that said that thou cannot develop. With right money and right road networks, it's always possible, and so I think anybody trying to rely on the the results of a traffic study to make this project go away, that's, I feel like that's going to be a false, um, false belief there. And so it's mainly just looking at where the driveways would be, how the cars could get in and out of the site. Currently, right now, this road, you know, is handling traffic, it's like one car per every five to six minutes. There's not been any kind of traffic, um, accidents or safety issues that we know of, so it's more of just circulation that we'd be looking at.
Yeah, we had asked that question and got the answer. Other comments or questions from the board?
I think, uh, one of the things that whole area is an area we've been looking at to, as a, as a village district overlay, uh, with the car wash across the street, uh, just down at Rogers and, uh, Grigsby, we rezoned that property there for, uh, commercial just past the church. I think we've looked at how that whole area ties in with Main Street in the future, uh, and, uh, to have the zoning of a village district, it gives us more opportunities to, uh, to have something other than just a residential house in there, uh, as part of the the overall plan for the town. So that's my hope, two cents.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
So, but by rezoning it for, um, town village, isn't necessarily saying for commercial?
No.
No.
No. It can be multi-use.
Yeah. Right.
And that, and relative to the site itself, that that is a, an area that's of concern with traffic. I've I've been down that particular area many times, so, um, I think, you know, if we do go further and develop this area, I think we need to really...
And that's why, that's why I wanted to clarify that we're not, we're not, uh, voting to, for this commercial, for this particular product to go there.
Absolutely not.
Going to town village.
No.
Town village, and then it's subject to the rules that town village implies.
Yeah.
And just because we do that doesn't mean down the road that that it's going to actually happen.
Right.
You know, the the way that they wish it would happen, it could, we have to make the changes to make it work.
Okay.
But I also, I'm cognizant of the fact that parking is impacted when the church is in session, uh, along there, and I don't know how we can improve that, but it is, when they have churches in, that the whole one side of the street is blocked, and if somebody parks on the other side of the street, then you can't even get one car through, so I think that's something maybe the police is going to have to look at in the...
And they actually, that that lot gets used for parking for the church from town to town, too.
There's a lot to talk about.
It is a trouble, it's an area that needs to be looked at.
But I think, but anyway, that's...
Okay, other comments or questions?
Yeah, actually, a couple of thoughts. I mean, if if this were to remain R-10, we could put, or we, we, a developer could put, um, perhaps three, maybe even four houses on that. I mean, that's, that's, that's how, that's how it's zoned right now, because I think it's a little bit more than a quarter, uh, three quarters of an acre. Um, you know, and there are other, other, pretty intensive uses that could be on that site, but if you look at that little, that little strip behind it, um, between Rogers and the site, you know, that's, that's right now, I think that's, uh, that's zoned, that...
TV.
TV.
Town village.
And then if you look at, you know, the the piece just south of it, where the the church is, um, you know, I know some people might disagree with me here, but although it's zoned residential, I mean, a church really is a business. I mean, it operates as a business. So, in, with the, with the exception of the, uh, you know, the the strip of houses there on Grigsby, that site is for the most part surrounded by commercially zoned or or uses which are commercial in nature.
Right, right.
And 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 it's also really, it's not on 55 or Main Street, but it is really less than a block away from that, and, you know, for the most part, 55 business is just that, it is a business.
Corridor.
Corridor, right there, so, um, I see it as, as, as a commercial site. Uh, I think a lot of the concerns that we we've heard are, or can be addressed at, um, at site plan.
Site plan.
See, and then we, we, we're not even supposed to listen to that, the potential for it to be a street shop at all, so.
That's correct.
I mean, it was mentioned, we should, we just have to completely eliminate that from, uh, you know, just redact it from our brains.
Correct.
Um, so, for the most part, it's just the use on that particular site, so, um, access and traffic and all that, that's, that can be done at the, uh...
Stage.
At the next, at the next stage.
Presented, yeah.
But I think that in itself, the use for that site, see, and also right now, it, you know, it's been stated that it's a use for, as a parking lot for a church, it's essentially a parking lot for a business.
Yeah.
Right now, so in a sense, it's already being used for...
Business purpose.
A commercial, uh, commercial use. So that's my thought in the process, relative to this.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I'm just going to echo that, uh, the surrounding properties are town village already, town village, uh, the church itself, I mean, it's best suited to be in the town village, so it gives us a chance to work with it in a different context going forward as part of the planning process.
Just make sure, I mean, during that process, we'll...
We'll take, really look closely.
We'll be able to take into effect the problems that they have with that, and in a second.
Exactly.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, moving along. Anything else to add? There you go. There are two motions to consider.
Motion to accept the following statements as being true. The requested zone map change from R-10 residential to to town village, TB town village, is consistent with the vision of Holly Springs comprehensive plan, since the future land use plan and the village district area plan indicate this property as mixed use and it, and the town village, uh, district is intended for appropriate uses of commercial, business, and residential land uses within the downtown village district.
Second. Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously, number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance 14 REZ 13 to approve an axon map change petition 14 REZ 13 to change the zoning of plus or minus 0.75 acres of Wake County Penn 0649915191 from R-10 residential to town village as submitted by Leslie Richmond.
Question.
Question.
Is this...
14.
Oh, 14 instead of, it should be 13, 14 instead of 13.
Yeah, I was thinking that when I said it's, it's, it needs to be changed to 14.
14 REZ 14, yes, that's correct.
Yep.
Want to amend the motion?
I was thinking about that when I was reading it, yeah, thanks for that.
Amend the motion.
Amend the motion? Just read that part, mind if you would. 14 REZ 14.
Uh, 14 REZ 14, right?
Yep.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
I was thinking exactly that one.
I got you.
Good catch, good catch.
Yep. Gen item 8K, public hearing, 14 REZ 15, 4400, Sunset Lake Road, Sean.
Last one for the night. We made it.
Unbelievable.
All right. This property is located, uh, north side of town along Sunset Lake Road, just east of, uh, Wood Creek, which is over here, we got Newberry Park, um, to the east of this property, and it's located right along Heritage Meadows Drive. So the specific request before you tonight is to change the zoning of the property from R-20 residential to R-10 residential. Uh, the comp plan designates this property as residential, which allows between two and 15 units per acre, uh, with higher densities located, uh, closer to the core. As you can see, the core area of Sunset Lake Road and Holly Springs Road is is kind of far off in the corner here, so we would expect densities to decrease as we move further away from this core, from 15 down to two as we move further away. The current zoning is R-20, which would allow for 1.75 units per acre, and the request is to change that to R-10, which would allow for 3.25 units per acre, single family residential development. Um, existing zoning of the adjacent Wood Creek is R-10, Newberry Park just down the street is R-10, uh, this is Wood Creek to the south here, um, so it's lending itself to R-10. These are some older neighborhoods, um, that are existing that are R-20, uh, with some larger lots. Uh, the planning board, uh, discussed this, recommended approval 8-0, um, they discussed the adjacent land uses and found it to be compatible with, um, existing development. Um, they also, there was also a question about if 540 would impact this, and it's, this is the, uh, proposed 540 corridor, so it's, um, quite a bit north of that, so it would not have any impacts to this property directly. Any questions for me?
Planning board was 8-0. There you go. Questions to Sean?
So this is to increase, it would be increasing the density?
It would be increasing the density from R-20 to R-10, so 1.75 units per acre to 3.25 units per acre.
How many neighborhoods are on that side of Sunset Lake Road?
Um, parts of Arbor Creek are up there, we got Twisted Creek Town Homes, which are directly adjacent to Sunset Lake Road, um, then there is a large wooded area, let's see if I can...
On the corner.
Get a better map. Large wooded area, then you got the newer part of Wood Creek, then you've got this property, Newberry Park, um, further down, you got Tuscany, Sunset Point, and then you get to the other entrance of Wood Creek, and then you get to the intersection of Sunset Lake and Holly Springs Road.
My, my recollection, recollection of that is that it's, it's not, um, it's got a lot of wooded areas, doesn't it?
There is quite a bit of wooded area, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Other questions or comments?
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
There is a difference, because I think there's another road that's...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, Sean?
I have nothing further.
Applicant? Wish to speak, anybody here?
Public hearings.
All right, it's a public hearing, so we'll open and close public hearing for discussion. Hearing none.
Motion to accept.
Two motions.
Motion number one, motion to accept the following statements as being true, the requested zone map change from R-20 to R-10 is consistent with the vision of Holly Springs as printed on the screen.
Second. Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously, number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance 14 REZ, and that should be 15.
Correct.
And back zone map change petition 14 REZ 15 to change the zoning of 5.84 acres of Wake County Penn number 0750524075 from R-20 residential to R-10 residential as submitted by Kensington Partners LLC.
Spoken like a true CPA.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Hypo's in there, huh?
Thank you. Yeah, it happens.
Joni will catch him.
Gen item 9A, consent agenda, member 10.
You did, you'll catch him, right?
Well, there were 100 slides, and I usually crew freedom, but tonight I stopped about 57.
Maybe even.
Because it was like 10 minutes before the meeting, so I just...
We'll forget. No worries.
Okay, member 10.
Motion to adopt a consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda's been adopted. Number 10, other business, I'll be very brief. Uh, I just want to let everybody know that the anti-bullying team, some of us went down to help the governor light the Christmas tree, and we met the governor briefly, and so we are on target for continuing our process and our crusade, um, and I guess that's it. I'll stop at that point. Anybody else?
I'll just jump in.
Oh, go ahead.
Just say that the, um, the mayor was honored, uh, this week by the, uh, Mormon church up in, uh, Apex, uh, for his contributions to the, uh, community over the years, and it was a good, uh, good presentation, and it was very well received.
Thank you, I was, I was surprised and honored.
And you took it very well.
I did, didn't I?
You did.
And I gave a brief speech, didn't I?
Very brief.
It was for you.
(laughing).
Quite short.
It's a lot of hate in this world, you know that? I guess as you get to this hour, people are hateful, you know that?
No, sir.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, you know that.
Linda's got it.
In line of that, we had a wonderful, um, parade this, this weekend, and also Main Street Christmas. I want to commend the staff, y'all have done an awesome job on that, that's...
Absolutely.
It's better and better every year. So I had fun.
The weather was perfect.
The weather was perfect, the sun beat right in our face going down that, so we got our little suntan from it, so it's, and the police did an absolutely awesome job.
Yes.
And I just want to say, on behalf of the Quanis Club, which helped co-sponsor the parade with the town, how much we appreciate all the hard work that Joni, Barb, Public Works did in terms of cleaning up afterward. Uh, Chief Herring, your department, your people out there directing traffic, Chief Smith, your, your, the firemen who are out there, and just everyone involved in the, uh, pulling off a very successful parade. Weather was perfect, good attendance. On behalf of the Grinch, thank you.
Who choked me during the parade.
By, going back to the traffic, I think my husband and I walked from where we got off all the way back to Food Line, uh, and it was, um, just as the parade was ending. And we got in our car, and just then, we were able to drive down Main Street. That's how quickly you guys moved that traffic. It was an excellent job.
It was, it was wonderful, thank you.
Same kind of kudos, go to the Park and Rec Department for the Christmas tree lighting. Uh, that was spectacular, I thought, it worked, everything was fine, trees looking big and better every year, and the, and the Holly Springs High School choir sang here prior to going over there, and I should not have told them this, but I did, I said, you guys are twice as good as the choir that sang at the governor's Christmas tree lighting parade, and I said, but please don't tell the governor. So don't tell the governor, keep this quiet.
I don't care.
I know, I know, who cares? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Managers report, did we take all your...
You, you took...
We did, didn't we?
It, it is the season for saying things, and, um, yeah, and I was going to thank our staff, because I think both of those events, Main Street, um, Christmas, the tree lighting, um, seemed like everyone enjoyed themselves, that was a really well organized event, um, Joni had ordered the weather for the parade well in advance this year.
She did a good job.
It is.
Good job.
And it was picture perfect, and, uh, there, there is a lot of planning that goes into that, a lot of advanced planning and, and, you know, and, and we don't really see it, we just see the, the end result, and it, and it's a great, very successful event, uh, but, uh, you know, and, and there are a number of other volunteers in addition to the staff that helped make those events possible, and thanks to those folks as well. Uh, and, um, thank you, uh, Councilman Cobb, for taking time, uh, out of your busy schedule. The week before last, when we got the, uh, the audit together, he came in and met with us, we went over it during lunch, and he took it home and took the pains to actually go over that thing, so, uh, that, that document, although it was a very good document, um, so, thanks again. Oh, also, the second, um, I believe, second farmer's market is this Saturday from 10 to 12 in the, at the Cultural Center.
Wow. It was bought fast, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes, it is. Great. Thanks, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas to you.
Right.
Counselor?
Not done yet.
Yes, sir, uh, there are two matters to discuss in closed session pursuant to 143 318 at 11A.
Response.
For the, um, economic development director, we'd like to discuss the potential for, um, uh, some, uh, economic development opportunities relating to property in the business park